Good evening, everyone. Good evening and welcome to the May 9th meeting of the Glendale City Council, being called to order at 6:06 PM. Madam Clerk, may we have roll call, please?
Yes, council members Asadrian.
Here.
Devine.
Here.
Kasakian.
Here.
Najarian.
Here.
Mayor Brotman.
Here. And now, would you kindly stand for the flag salute?
Yes. Please have your hand over your heart. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And please remain standing for the invocation by Pastor Weedy from the First Presbyterian Church of Glendale.
That's right.
Okay.
That's the right spot. All right. So, everyone, please join me in prayer. Let us bow our heads. By all that we call good and holy, we pray tonight, from the heart, out of our rich traditions of all of our faiths, we pray for guidance and wisdom, compassion and generosity, for clarity of mind and thoughtfulness of speech. May our leaders act with justice and mercy on behalf of the citizens of this great city, that in our civic life, we would reflect the best of who we are and what we could be. Help us to think not only of ourselves but of others, and to build upon the good work of our predecessors. May our city be a bright light, showing forth the full flowering of all its people, and may we commit ourselves to the grand possibilities of public service, responsible leadership, and an exciting future. Amen.
Amen. Okay, and may we have your report, please?
Yes. The agenda for May 9th, 2023, regular meeting of the Glendale City Council was posted on Thursday, May 4th, 2023, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Thank you. And what is next?
Next are presentations and appointments. The regular meeting for City Council and Housing Authority on May 16, 2023, have been canceled. The next regular meeting will be held on May 23rd, 2023.
Do we need to announce the budget study session? Or are we good with that?
If you like, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Yeah, this coming Thursday, the day after tomorrow, at 9:00 AM, will be our second budget study session that will cover the budget, proposed budget, for our internal service departments.
No.
I apologize. I apologize. It's the public safety that includes police and fire as well as GWP.
Right.
The third one next week, Tuesday, will be internal service department.
Right.
Thank you.
So if you're interested in our budgets and want to see what's going on at a detailed level, you can come at 9:00 on Thursday and learn about fire, police, and Glendale Water and Power, three, obviously, very, very important departments in the city. Okay, what is next, Madam Clerk?
Next is mayor's commendation for the 2023 Children's Bookmark Contest winners.
Okay, thank you. So we have some amazing bookmarks here. I guess we get to keep these?
You do.
Oh, okay. And are we gonna show, okay, we're gonna show everybody the winners?
Yes.
So I will, before I do the commendation, I'll turn it to you. You can, you can talk about what's, what we have in front of us, and then I'll read the commendation. Thank you.
Wonderful. Good evening, Mayor Brotman, City Council, and members of staff that we have here today. My name is Jennifer Driscoll, and I am the Senior Library Supervisor of Children's Services at Glendale Library Arts and Culture, and I am joined this evening by my colleague, Aurora Aravalo, who is a children's librarian at our Grand View Library. Thank you so much for taking the time this evening for us to share about the library's 46th Annual Children's Bookmark Contest and to acknowledge the winners of the contest. If you can change the slides, bring that one up. So each year, the library invites children in preschool through eighth grade to design a bookmark based around the year's summer reading theme. The 2023 theme is Find Your Voice, and we encourage children to share their stories, express themselves, and spark change through their artwork on the bookmarks. We had more than 700 entries from schools in GUSD and beyond, and we chose one winner from each grade level, thanks to the help of a panel of three judges. The winning bookmarks, you have in your hands right now for a sneak peek, but they will be distributed for our whole community, beginning on the first day of our Summer Reading Challenge, June 1st, 2023. And we have all of our winners here joining us this evening. So if you can change the slide, we'll bring the first ones up. So I'm gonna call the winners' names, and they're here, so they will come up and get a copy, so everyone here can see their bookmarks as well. Our preschool winner is Aram Sahakian. Our kindergarten winner.
And, and if they could stay up here?
Oh, yes.
Can they? Is that all right? Maybe, maybe Aram's, Aram's dad or mom could come up with him.
We can have supporters up here, right? So our kindergarten winner is Orion Werner. Our first grade winner is Alexander Hofseppian. From second grade, we have Natalie Garumanians. And from third grade, we have Emily Shanazari. Let's go to the next slide. All right, from fourth grade, Francesca Longo. Our fifth grade winner was Arby Shervanian. Sixth grade winner, Ella, Ella Degotamer. Seventh grade winner, Unama. And eighth grade winner, Christiana Zadorian. So we would love, if it's possible, to have the council members come down.
Yes, well, first, let me read the commendation. So if all of the, the artists, the student artists could turn around and face us, and maybe put the smaller-sized ones in front, if you want. Oh, that's perfect, perfect, perfect. So let me read the commendation. You're all getting a mayor's commendation. And it says, "In recognition of your artistic contribution towards the Glendale Library Arts and Cultures 46th Annual Bookmark Contest, please accept this commendation." You're gonna get to put this on your wall. "Your artwork in this year's theme of Find Your Voice inspires other young artists by sharing your story of self-expression and sparking change through your words and artwork. And we are honored to showcase your art in our libraries and our community. We commend your talents and encourage you to continue to engage your creativity and find your voice as a citizen of Glendale. We are grateful to have you be a part of Glendale Library Arts and Cultures Annual Bookmark Contest and an active reader and artist in our community. Signed, Dan Brotman, Mayor." All right, we'll do it. This is a special photo op.
And I just wanna say thank you to all the winners for their creative artistry and making their voices heard, and thank you so much again, Mayor, and to all the members of council for helping us celebrate these wonderful artists today. Thank you.
And thanks to you and to everybody at Glendale Library Arts and Culture for doing this every year.
Thank you.
Okay, and what is our next proclamation?
Next is EMS Week Proclamation.
Okay. So we have a proclamation for Emergency Medical Services Week, and Todd Tucker, our battalion chief, will be accepting this. So when, when you can clear a path, maybe you need a siren? Okay. So I will, I'll read the proclamation first.
Thank you.
Okay? So again, it's for Emergency Medical Services Week, and the proclamation reads, "Whereas emergency medical services is a vital public service, and whereas access to quality emergency care dramatically improves the survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden illness or injury, and whereas EMS plays a critical role in public outreach and injury prevention, and is evolving in its role as an important member of the healthcare community, and whereas first responders, emergency medical technicians, and paramedics stand ready to provide compassionate, lifesaving care to those in need 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and whereas the members of EMS teams, both career and volunteer, engage thousands of hours of specialized training and continuing education to enhance their lifesaving skills, and whereas it is appropriate to recognize the value and the accomplishments of EMS practitioners by designating Emergency Medical Services Week. Now therefore, I, Daniel Brotman, Mayor of the City of Glendale, do hereby proclaim the week of May 22nd to 26th, 2023, as Emergency Medical Services Week, with the theme, 'This is EMS: Caring for Our Communities.' I encourage the community to observe this week with appropriate programs, ceremonies, and activities." And Battalion Chief Tucker, yes, if you could say a few words?
Thank you, Mayor Brotman, members of council, city staff. It's a, it's an honor to, or to accept this proclamation on behalf of the EMS workers here in the City of Glendale. We run approximately 20,000 calls a year in the fire department, and about 85% of those are medical in nature. So we're pretty busy out there. So this, this proclamation is, is intended to highlight the responders, both emergency medical technicians, paramedics of the fire department, but we also have those members trained at that level of service at the police department as well. So I'd like to make sure that the public is aware of that. We can't do it all by ourselves, however. We need the public to be involved and to hopefully get trained in ways that can help us, help them, and one of those ways is in CPR. We've got our Sidewalk CPR Week coming up, the week of June 1st through the 7th, and we're gonna be hosting Sidewalk CPR training for all members of the community, if they're interested, on June 1st, on Central Avenue, right next to the Galleria and Americana, right between those two, from 10 to 1, I'm sorry, from 1 till 4.
1 till 4.
And then at Vaquero Plaza at Glendale City College, from 10 till 1 that same day. So we'd really like to implore the members of the community to get trained in CPR, AED use, so they can help us in those critical moments. But we really appreciate the recognition, so thank you very much.
Thank you. So this is, well, don't go away yet, but this is June 1st, you're saying 10 to 1 at Glendale College?
Yes.
1 to?
4 o'clock.
4 at, on Central, right in between the Americana and the Galleria?
Correct. The 100 block is South Central, right in front of the Galleria.
Right in front of the Galleria.
We'll have an easy up, we'll have tables, we'll have mannequins, we'll have trainer AEDs, and we want to get as many people trained as we can.
And anybody can walk up and they'll get their EMS training. How long does it take? Or not, their CPR training, sorry.
So this, we're focusing on hands-only CPR for this training. That means you're not doing respirations, you're not doing the breathing. The most important part of CPR, especially prior to EMS arrival, is chest compressions for somebody that's, their heart is not beating. So if we can do a really quick 10-minute training session, we can get folks trained in the proper landmarks, technique, rate, depth, and the use of AED. If an AED, an automated external defibrillator shows up on scene, how to use that, how to be comfortable using something like that. They're all automated, but they can be a little intimidating.
Okay, thank you. I'm gonna bring this down.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Okay, Madam Clerk, what is next?
Next are consent items, items including minutes. The following are routine and may be acted upon by one motion. Any member of council or, or the audience requesting separate consideration may do so by making such request before motion is proposed.
Do we have any public comments? Anybody want to pull anything?
We do not have any public comments.
No, and colleagues?
I'll move the consent calendar.
Okay, so we have a motion, Councilmember Devine, and a second by Councilmember Asatrian. Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Asadrian.
Yes.
Devine.
Yes.
Kasakian.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Mayor Brotman.
Yes. And what is next?
Next are city council and staff comments.
Who wants to go first? Councilmember Najarian?
No, just thank everyone who attended my dad's funeral. I appreciate the outreach and the outpouring of compassion by the, the city, all my colleagues on council, police department, and, and many others were there, so, city attorney, city manager, city clerk, thank you very much, and it was well appreciated by the family. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Asatrian? Nothing? Councilmember Kasakian?
Well, this week, or last week, rather, we had the opportunity to attend a conference for Southern California Association of Governments. Councilmember Asatrian and I both were there, and there were a number of interesting topics that were discussed. This is a meeting of a lot of the agencies, the cities that comprise the Southern California area, a large representation of these agencies, and topics that were, that presentations were given on were electrifying transportation. Also, there was presentations on how different agencies and different jurisdictions are dealing with the housing crisis, trying to build more housing, not even the challenges facing building affordable housing, just challenges building housing in period, in general. So some interesting discussions were had, a lot of networking with other agencies, exchanging of ideas, and yeah, that was pretty much the only thing I have to report on. There were also other community events, but I didn't, I wasn't able to make it to everything I wanted to make it to this weekend. Thank you.
Thank you. You're good. Okay, and I believe we have some important staff comments.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of city council, three items. I'd start off with inviting chiefs to the podium. In the last few days, the police department and our detectives made a significant arrest of a drug dealer whose, whose actions had unfortunately impacted two young men in our community recently, the last few years, so this is a significant arrest, and I'll let Chief Sid cover some of the details for you.
Mayor, council members, city manager Galani, and pleasure to be with you all this evening. As the city manager touched on, this morning, I had the opportunity to go downtown to the federal building and attend a press conference, and at the conference I was, press conference, I was joined by a few other local chiefs, our sheriff here in LA County, as well as some of our federal partners with the DEA, as well as the FBI, and the Attorney General's Office with the Department of Justice. And in that, we announced an indictment that was, that would be coming down, along with a handful of arrests that were made here in the local area of individuals that, through investigation, had been identified for distributing and selling narcotics, but more particularly, where we were able to identify that it's ultimately resulted in the loss of someone's life. And more particularly, unfortunately, most of these cases of a young person's life. This is noteworthy, I think, for a handful of reasons. Obviously, we think are all well aware of the impacts dangerous drugs and poisons are having on our community, particularly fentanyl, but more specifically, in this instance, one of the cases that was highlighted, as the city manager touched on, was a case that impacted this community in late 2021, when Tevan Givorkian lost his life to fentanyl. And it impacted two youth that day. Fortunately, one of them ultimately survived from the application of Narcan, but Tevan lost his life. And, you know, I want to start by offering again my condolences to the family. I've had an opportunity to meet his father, hear their story. Myself, the entire police department have tried to support this family through what's got to be an unbearable loss, and I want to remind them that this department, this community, will continue to embrace them, and put our arms around them, and support them as they go through an incredibly difficult process. To that end, our detectives, starting from the night of the incident, got to work diligently, and within a handful of weeks, was able to identify, in early 2022, late 21, the individual we believed that was responsible. And after doing some work and ultimately connecting with our federal partners at the DEA, and the Department of Justice's office, while it took longer than I would have liked, we're at a time now that this indictment is being passed down. Again, I think important for all the reasons that we've touched on and the impacts that it's having on our community, but I also hope that it sends a message to any individuals in our community that would use these poisons to impact our community in a negative way, particularly our youth. This police department and our profession are gonna aggressively investigate those incidents and try to hold the individuals accountable, while we continue to do the work in our community to educate, particularly our youth of the dangers of these things, work in collaboration with all our community groups to make sure that we're fully aware and understand the dangers of these drugs. But as I said, while it stems from an unfortunate incident, happy to report that through the work of our staff and in collaboration with our local partners, we'll be passing down some indictments, and just this Friday, our officers and detectives went out
It was something that was the worst of any tragedy that a parent can imagine. And I'm glad that we went after the person who was, who was responsible for giving this substance to these young individuals. And, you know, if one thing comes out of this, more so than the punishment of the individual involved, is that parents should be aware of what their children are doing, who they're associating with, where they're at, and to the kids out there, just be very, very careful. Thank you, Chief, and we appreciate everything our police department is doing in this regard.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for your support.
And I would just, maybe just say something that a friend has been saying to me when I call these situations overdose, overdoses. She says, "They're not overdoses, they're poisonings." This is not a situation of somebody taking more than they should, trying to get a bigger high. This is somebody, you know, experimenting, perhaps like many kids do, experimenting with something that they think is relatively harmless, and it turns out, in fact, it's something different. And they were, they were given something which unfortunately takes their lives. So it is, it is a serious crime, and I guess it's something, you know, to the kids out there, you know, yeah, we get that you want to experiment, but, you know, anything that's online, anything that you buy, you know, around on the market, it could end your life.
Worth mentioning, you mentioned online a few of the specific cases that were highlighted, not the Glendale one, but others, the impact that social media and those platforms are having in pushing these poisons. I think that's well termed forward, and we work hard to try to educate our parents. As a parent myself, trying to be aware of those dangers and do everything we can to educate our youth and protect them from those dangers, for sure.
Councilmember Asatrian?
I'd also like to thank the police department for their efforts. You know, Mr. Givorkian's loss is our, is and has been our collective loss. I think there were also a lot of lessons learned for the entire community, but I also want to recognize the kind of community partnerships and outreach you've been doing. I've seen all these partnerships in the last several months, especially covering overdose and fentanyl, and I think it's something that most parents don't know how to deal with, and I recognize the lack of education that comes in this area from the curriculum that comes down from the state. One of the conversations that I was having with our GUSD partners was the fact that a lot of that curriculum is outdated, and what we're teaching our children are things that were very big in like the 80s and 90s, and they haven't been updated. And so whatever our police department is doing to help supplement those missing pieces for parents and community members and youth is very much appreciated, so thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Chief. Thank you all.
Mr. Mayor, keeping with the topic of public safety, I'd like to invite Chief Ernst to the podium. As you may recall, last Wednesday, Glendale Studios, that's under construction, 1,200 block of South Glendale, experienced the collapse of a number of their roof trusses that resulted in injury to construction workers, and luckily, very luckily, no deaths occurred, and our fire department personnel swiftly arrived at the site and went to work and made sure that the workers are safe with the help of our other sister agencies and other agencies that came, came out to help. And I'll let Chief Ernst provide more detail on that incident.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, Mayor Brotman, council members, staff. I'm going to run through just a number of pictures here in no specific order, so you don't have to look at me, you can rather look at pictures of the incident. I'll just give you a real quick overview of the incident. Last Wednesday, May the 3rd, 2023, the Glendale Fire Department responded to a roof collapse at the East End Studios, which is literally located right next to Fire Station 22 at 1,201 South Glendale. As it happened, one of our command staff chiefs was at the fire station in a meeting when he heard and felt the thunderous sound of the building collapse. As a side note, our apparatus repair shop is actually located on the same fire station property, and he actually thought one of our heavy apparatus may have fallen off of one of their pair lifts. It shook the ground that much. The involved occupancy was found to be a large, open floor, approximately 100 foot by 300 foot, three-story movie production studio under construction with massive steel web truss spanning the longer 200 to 300 foot length of the building, which unexpectedly failed all at once. The initial Glendale Fire Department response was augmented by resources from Pasadena, Burbank, and San Marino, as well as two helicopters from the Los Angeles Fire Department, with approximately 75 firefighters participating in the rescue. It took our crews two and a half hours to strategically and methodically rescue the trapped victims, including use our team members using an aerial ladder to perform a technical pickoff rescue of a trapped worker from a disabled boom truck on which a damaged steel beam was precariously balanced. You can see that in the picture here in front of you. And finally, as you probably saw on the news, the use of two LAFD helicopters to hoist rescue the last two trapped workers that were stuck in a separate articulating boom rescue boom lift. Although there were 75 construction workers on site when the roof collapsed, only six patients were trapped during the incident, five of which were transported to area hospitals in stable condition with minor injuries. Truly a lucky day for the construction workers on scene, as I'm sure every responder shared the same initial gruesome thoughts that I did, seeing the mass of twisted steel, not too distantly reminiscent of some of the worst collapses we probably all still have very vivid memories of. I'm proud to stand before you, representing the many firefighters and police officers that were on duty that day, and every day that would merely say they were just doing their job. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you. Councilmember Devine?
I just want to say that hearing or seeing the commendation for the EMS staff, from hearing from our chief of police and now our fire chief, how lucky we are here in Glendale to have departments and staff that are so well-trained, work so hard to keep us safe, to rescue, just to do your job. And I thank you from the bottom of my heart, and I know that all of our residents thank you as well. Congratulations and thanks to all of you.
Thank you.
I watched that on TV. I went home from an event, actually, yeah, and I went home and the city manager told me that there was a collapse, and I went home, turned on the TV, and I watched the whole thing, and I felt like I was there. It was just really something to behold, so thank you all very much for saving lives, all of you.
Indeed.
All of you.
Thank you for your comments.
So, Mr. Mayor Brotman?
Yeah.
So, Chief, good work, really great coordination with LA as well, but accidents don't happen by accident, and I'm very concerned about the continued construction at that location. Either the plans were wrong, or the engineering was, was incomplete, or, I mean, we were extremely lucky there weren't any deaths, and it certainly put your men and women at risk trying to maneuver between those things. So have we shut them down? Are we making sure that what they're doing is right? Because I'm very concerned that, that there shouldn't be any more work, though we review their plans A to Z, review their work procedures, and OSHA, I'm sure, has to be involved in this sort of thing. So let's just not clean up the mess and say, "Go at it, guys," because I think that would be a mistake. And, I mean, obviously, I'm more, I'm primarily concerned about our own firefighters and rescuers, but also the workers who probably are just following orders, standing underneath those steel beams. Do you have any info on that, Mr. City Manager?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, City Council, Councilmember Najarian, great point, great questions. Our new building official actually, on his third day on the job, had to attend this incident and with his staff. When I was there, I saw a number of our building inspectors and engineers out there evaluating the site. Initially, they red-tagged the building, and, but I will let Mr. Calvert give you a little bit more detail as to where it stands currently.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Brotman, members of city council. That is correct. We immediately, building safety team went out there and immediately red-tagged the building. Once it was deemed safe to re-enter, that has been changed to a yellow tag so that they have the opportunity to clean up on the site. They will not be able to resume their work or resume progress on their work until they have completed a meeting with our building and safety team, ensuring that the proposed plans and the proposed path moving forward, including the cleanup itself, is something that meets our standards, our codes. So our building and safety team is working very closely with the construction team itself and the owner of the property.
And OSHA is doing a report, right?
Correct. It was notified on the day of the incident. As a standard protocol, anytime we have a significant injury of that sort, all of the on-scene commanders are aware that we'll make an OSHA notification from the scene, and normally the OSHA investigator will come out, actually, as we're in the tail end of our work.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Great, great job.
Thank you, Councilmembers.
Great job.
Okay. Last but not least, onto a more upbeat topic. I'd like to ask Mr. Calvert to announce our inaugural Small Business Summit that's going to take place next week. And Mr. Calvert will provide some, some more detail for the public and the audience.
Correct. Thank you. Good evening again, mayor and councilmembers. So we will be launching our first Small Business Summit that will be taking place next week, starting May 16th through May 18th. We'll have a number of events. This is originally initiated by our city council, giving us both that funding to start that, and as I'll touch on in a moment, opportunities to identify sponsorships, to be able to grow this into a larger, and what we hope is a much more successful and much more resourceful event for local businesses. But the intent and goal here is to really try to connect our local businesses with the resources that they need for funding, for capital, even just for networking, be able to bring them together and help provide them the resources that they need to help grow our local economy and grow everything from our tech ecosystem to what is identified in our economic development strategic plan as our primary goals. So the first event will take place Tuesday, May 16th at 10:00 AM. This is a combination of both virtual and person events, so on May 16th, those two events will be virtual. That will be something by the LA Small Business Development Center called Uncovering Access to Capital for Growth and Sustainability. Later in that day, at 2:00 PM, there'll also be a virtual presentation by the Pacific Asian Consortium in Employment, and that's really to help identify and provide resources on becoming certified as a woman or minority-owned business. May 17th, that evening, we'll be having one of our Tech on Tap presentations at Paperback Brewery. This will really, really be about tech tools to boost your business efficiency and overall bottom line. And then our primary day of events will be Thursday, May 18th, from 8:00 AM to 2:00 PM. This will be at the Embassy Suites, just north of the 134. This is really kind of a half-day session, really, again, trying to connect our small businesses with resources to help them network, to help them learn how to grow, and learn from some of our own local businesses. This is going to include a panel presentation called Winning a Workforce. That's going to include the Verdugo Workforce Board, the California Employers Association, and then our local business representatives from Union Jack T. and Massey's Kebab. There'll also be a one-on-one interview with Glendale-based Disco. That's really going to try to highlight the major ups and downs of starting a business here in Glendale, especially from somebody who's been very, very successful here in our own city. And there'll be other resources and tools, booths from the Small Business Administration, those from our own city resources, county resources as well. So we invite all of our small businesses to come out and participate, really learn about those resources from us, the county, the SBA, how they can bolster and grow their own business. Again, we would like to thank city council for helping us move this forward and this vision, this idea. We'd like to thank Councilmember Asatrian for helping us identify sponsorships, which have allowed us to grow this into something a little bit larger than I think we originally anticipated. That also includes sponsorships from Supervisor Barger's office and many of our own local and small businesses who are participating.
Great, thank you. Yes, Councilmember Asatrian?
I'd like to thank staff for the work that you've done. I said this in the afternoon, but I did want to mention, if you could note where people can sign up or where small businesses can register?
Yes, I skipped that last bullet point in there. Please go to chooseglendalca.gov. You can find more information, you can sign up and register for this as well. That's probably the most important part of my little five-minute spiel there.
And if I may add, the different sessions are also going to be available in different languages, as I understand it. There will be translation devices provided to those that are registered, so if individuals have a difficulty with, you know, understanding or speaking English, they, they have an opportunity to participate as well. And then I did want to highlight that beginning of May is also National Small Business Week, and so this is part of a national support for small businesses. So thank you again.
Thank you. Okay, what is next, Madam Clerk?
Next are committee event announcements, three minutes each.
Okay. And the first speaker is our own Greg Blekean. I hope I got that right. A fire engineer, paramedic, who's going to tell us about an event coming up in Glendale.
Good evening. On behalf of the Glendale Fire Department, I'd like to invite everyone in the community to join us this Saturday, May 13th, at Glendale Fire Station 21, which is our headquarters stations, for our annual Fire Service Day event. It's a great opportunity for the community to have one-on-one conversations, to see what type of apparatus, including our specialized equipment, like hazmat, urban search and rescue, and our brush equipment, to have a tour of the station, and there's going to be a lot of fun activities for children and adults alike. So we would like to have the community there to have a better understanding and idea of the fire department. There's a short video, I believe, that'll sum it up.
Hi, I'm Engineer Shane Baker, and I'd like to invite you to join us for Fire Service Day on Saturday, May 13th, from 9:00 AM to 2:00 PM at Fire Station 21. There'll be fun family activities such as fire station tours, visits from Sparky the Fire Dog, and live vehicle extrications. Hungry? A free pancake breakfast will be held from 9:00 AM to 12:00 noon. For more information, call 818-548-4814, or visit glendalefire.org. Hope to see you there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Devine, did you have a question?
I just wanted to say it's always the best event. It's always so much fun. You can see how delighted kids are, and it's just can't, I can't wait to be there.
Thank you.
Hope everybody enjoys.
See everyone there.
Okay. I'm hearing music. Okay. Okay, our next speaker is Herbert Milano.
Mayor Brotman, members of the city council, my name is Herbert Milano. Kind of interesting and heartwarming to come in and see these children talk about books and their involvement with the library. And I actually had a book to share with all of you. It's called Seattle's Medic One. I've been reading this this past week, I'm not yet done with it. The reason why I'm encouraging you to read it, read it, and maybe even members of the fire department and paramedics, is that it shows the history of Seattle and King County, and when they started with this process in 1969. And by 1974, in 60 Minutes, morally safer, of 60 Minutes said, "If you're going to have a heart attack, have it in Seattle, because your chances of survival is quite significant." And so I oftentimes come here to bring ideas or concepts about measuring performance or setting objectives, setting KPIs, because the issue of good governance and bad governance is something that most residents really should read about. And so last week, you were considering the idea of council districts.
and their involvement with the library. And I actually had a book to share with all of you. It's called Seattle's Medic One. I've been reading this this past week. I'm not yet done with it. The reason why I'm encouraging you to read it, and maybe even members of the Fire Department and paramedics, is that it shows the history of Seattle and King County, and when they started with this process in 1969. And by 1974, in 60 Minutes, morally safer, of 60 Minutes said, "If you're going to have a heart attack, have it in Seattle, because your chances of survival is quite significant." And so I oftentimes come here to bring ideas or concepts about measuring performance or setting objectives, setting KPIs, because the issue of good governance and bad governance is something that most residents really should read about. And so last week, you were considering the idea of council districts. And it was an idea that I was in favor of a decade ago, but I've had second thoughts about that, primarily as I started looking at the issue of corruption in the city of L.A., where they have council districts, and it doesn't appear to give them any additional benefits. And I think Councilman Najarian was right. There are significant problems that we may not be aware of. And so I have a list here of some of the council members of the city of L.A. Mark Ridley Thomas, Mitch Englander, Richard Alatore, Corrin Price, Herb Wesson, the sheer number of problems with regard to some of these council members who got elected and necessarily used that position for their own benefit, at the expense of the public. And so what happens when we lower the bar in the city of Glendale to someone getting into city council, and where the, where a particular single issue that may drive individuals can ignore the rest of the issues that pertain, the level of knowledge, the character of the person, and so forth? And so I've had, as I was listening to Councilman Najarian, I was nodding my head. He's got a good point, that we really should be very careful with regard to going in that direction, because there are other alternatives, other ways of voting. And that could be possibly a topic for another session, but maybe it will give the City Council an opportunity to look at the budget study session, and how you could look at districting efforts with regard to identifying deficiencies and things that the City Council needs to take a look at, to represent the needs of the various different areas of Glendale. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And our next speaker is Catherine Yurka.
Good evening, Mayor Brotman and Councilmembers. On April 18, I spoke during oral communications in response to a very public scolding that Councilmember Asatrian had given me, based on misinformation from the Assistant City Attorney. And this was regarding a letter I had sent about the project at 1642 South Central. Mrs. Asatrian had suggested that my letter was not only wrong, but irresponsible, and as I've since explained, it was neither. After I spoke on the 18th, Mrs. Asatrian addressed me and ended by stating, quote, "I don't appreciate threatening text messages to my personal cellphone at 11:00 p.m. at night." And I could only interpret it this one way, which is that I was being accused of having sent threatening text messages. And I think, I think that's very serious. And so I have provided a PowerPoint of the text messages that I sent. And these were sent to the cell number that she had given me at 9:15 and 11:20 p.m., when she was still at the council meeting that night. So the first is when I thought I had made a mistake in my letter. "If you don't verify legal information you get from anyone, whether a commissioner or not, whether a lawyer or not, then you're not doing your due diligence. I would never expect anyone not to check on legal citations that I give. I do not claim or pretend to be a lawyer. Please understand I wrote the letter in good faith. I hope you did understand the main thrust of Jillian's comments was that my basic claim about the requirements to prove economic infeasibility," this is the SEQA stuff, "if not the citations was correct. That was not clear to me. I'm going to do a closer review of what she said." And then after I did that review, the second message. "I took some time to make sure I had not made the error you, via Jillian, imputed to me. I did not, and then I provide details I won't go into. I look forward to seeing you next week during oral communications to clear this matter up. You really should check out the judge's ruling in the 534 North Kenwood case. It may give you pause before accepting city attorney's word on SEQA, and perhaps give you pause before you behave towards someone in such a publicly nasty way when the facts are not on your side. And I understand that we can all be taken by surprise, and I'm totally prepared to believe that Mrs. Asatrian misspoke when she indicated I had sent threatening texts. But as you can see, they're not threatening, and I did not threaten her, and I'm just simply here to ask that she not accuse me of doing so again. Thank you."
Thank you. And that is, do we have any callers, or is that it?
We do not.
We do not have callers. Okay. Then let's move on. What is next?
Next, our action items. A, libraries, libraries, arts, and culture regarding professional services agreement with the ACE Agency Incorporated to strategically perform communication, marketing, branding, and public relations services for arts and cultural events, exhibits, and public art in the city of Glendale. One motion authorizing the city manager or designee to enter into and execute a professional services agreement, subject to approval by the city attorney with the ACE Agency Incorporated in an amount now to exceed $500,000 dispersed throughout four fiscal years, fiscal year 2023-24, fiscal year 2025-24-25, fiscal year 25-2025-26, fiscal year 2026-27, from the Urban Art Program Fund, to strategically perform communication, marketing, branding, and public relations services for arts and cultural events, exhibits, and public art in the city of Glendale.
Okay. Mr. Galanian?
Gary Shaffer's on the phone. Good evening, Mayor Brotman, members of council. Gary Shaffer, Director, Library Arts and Culture. Something germane to this item occurred this morning that I wish to share with you. This morning, I was joined by Arts and Culture Commission Chair and Glendale Library Arts and Culture Trust President Jane Vire, who's with us this evening, as well as trust and library staff, and several heads of leading museums and art organizations across the Southland at the Natural History Museum at Exhibition Park near USC. The occasion was the Getty Foundation announced the awardees of over 40 grants totaling over $17 million for their third rendition of Pacific Standard Time, set to kick off in fall 2024. The theme of for 2024 is "Where Art and Science Collide." Among the awardees was a joint proposal titled "The Stars Are Calling," submitted by the Glendale Library Arts and Culture Trust in collaboration with JPL and the Glendale Library. The award amount is $200,000, and to say we are over the moon with excitement is actually an understatement. Thank you. This is just, this is just one of a dozen or so major arts initiatives Glendale Library Arts and Culture is working on over the next few years. In doing these initiatives, we wish to reach out our full potential, and we believe we found the perfect partner to specialize, to help us promote all these great initiatives in the PR firm we are presenting to you this evening for your consideration. However, this wasn't our dream alone. This is also the dream of the Arts and Culture Commissioners, five women appointed by you who volunteer their time so that they, the city may one day realize the goal of being known as an arts and culture destination. The PR firm will not just promote the city of Glendale arts events and initiatives, they will work to promote any kind of initiative happening in the city, whether it's a city event, or it's a non-city event. So this could be a festival at the library for Dia de los Muertos, or it could be a non-city private gallery opening, a new play series, or anything like that, an art walk, film festival, and so on. Just a bit about our process.
Play series, or anything like that.
Play series. It's a good stall, because my clicker isn't...
My trigger is.
Okay. That's fine. So our process was extensive. We researched other municipal arts, PR, RFPs. We drafted our own and got help and input from commissioners and, as well as economic development. We dispersed it to over 70 PR firms across Southern California, as well as put it on our Arts and Culture website, and I'll detail that part of the process on the next page. We followed up with 10 firms that specialize in PR-centered, on-the-art. Five firms applied for the opportunity. Staff, along with a representative from Economic Development, interviewed three firms, detailed here, and those were presented, two of those firms were presented to commission, and they chose the final firm. So we heard presentations from the ACE Agency, Bastian Amplify, as well as Mosaic Media and Communications. ACE and Mosaic presented to commission, and commission unanimously chose the ACE Agency. This is just a little bit of the outreach we did with PR firms, and the process and the numbers that I went through. And we have all, you know, the contacts for all those firms that we did. Next, I would like to, with your permission, invite up Ms. Ashley Patterson, the CEO and founder of the ACE Agency, who has a team of 12 colleagues who assist her and her clients with PR, marketing, social media, event planning, and design. Ashley also subcontracts with a firm, our economic development partner, had worked with in the past, Jovan Orozco, and his firm, We the Creative, a firm designated as a small and disadvantaged enterprise. So if you'd like, I can bring up Ashley, and she can present to you. Can you get the next slide up, and then Ashley, if you could come up? Thank you.
Clicker's not working.
You can turn.
I'll just say a slide. Thank you, Gary. And good evening, Mayor Brotman and City Councilmembers. Thank you for inviting. I want to go back to, there we go. Thank you for inviting the ACE Agency here tonight in consideration of our proposal to provide communication services, promoting the arts and culture projects in the city of Glendale. I'm Ashley Patterson, founder of ACE. It's wonderful to meet you all tonight and have the opportunity to introduce our agency, our work, and approach to this exciting project. I wanted to provide a snapshot of some of the other brands we represent. As a lifestyle firm, we have a core strength working in arts and culture, in addition to other areas of focus, including the public sector, hospitality, destinations, retail, restaurants, and special events, which really gives the agency a broad spectrum of experience and strong media relationships across diverse sources. And in the public sector, ACE has the privilege of providing public relations and marketing services for City of Anaheim, City of Irvine, City of Santa Ana, City of Santa Monica, City of Santa Monica Cultural Affairs, County of Orange, OC Parks, Downtown Santa Monica Inc., Loson Rail Corridor Agency, and Orange County Transportation Authority. And many of our public sector projects have included public arts PR initiatives for City of Santa Monica, City of Santa Ana, and Downtown Santa Monica, Inc., to name a few. We also represent arts organizations, including Center for the Art of Performance at UCLA, Catalina Museum for Art and History, Hayton Children's Museum at Santa Monica Place, and Laguna Art Museum. And arts and culture seems to be woven into many of our even non-arts-related projects. Going into just a couple of our work samples, ACE collaborated with City of Santa Monica Cultural Affairs to promote Art of Recovery, which is a grant program that harnesses the arts to play an important role in economic recovery efforts while positioning Santa Monica as a cultural destination. The communication strategy was focused on developing meaningful story angles to generate earned media coverage in local, regional, and national publications about the city's public art initiatives. We also developed a social media content strategy complementing the Art of Recovery project schedule. Social media content was designed to really illuminate the various arts programs through engaging copy, dynamic visuals, with goals of cultivating community awareness and generating participation in the programs and increasing engagement on social media platforms. We also work with Downtown Santa Monica, Inc., which is a nonprofit that works with the city of Santa Monica to promote economic stability and growth within the downtown. We collaborate with DTSM to create and implement strategic public relations campaigns that promote all of the amenities and happenings that the downtown and Third Street Promenade have to offer, which include public art programs. This is through local, regional, and national media coverage and community engagement. Here, you're seeing a screenshot of coverage highlighting the annual Samo Pride celebration and our collaboration with LGBTQ+ artists. Again, here are an example of coverage of a special public art installation program that was developed for Black History Month in the downtown. And broadcast coverage, you'll see this as a KTLA segment, has been a successful media source for converting awareness into and driving participation in the arts and other cultural programs and events. Here's a snapshot of some local West L.A. media coverage featuring Black History Month. While national, regional, and broadcast coverage is really our key editorial targets, we also work to ensure that we saturate local media opportunities. And another case study, we've collaborated with Catalina Museum for Art and History on public relations and social media marketing since 2019. Our campaigns developed highlight the museum's exhibition, history of the island, public programs and events, as well as the executive team. Our strategy is designed to elevate the perception of the museum as an optimist cultural destination and reason to visit Catalina Island, or top thing to do while you're on the island. Regional and national media coverage and lifestyle and arts publications, in addition to engaging social media content work to increase reach, expand audiences, and convert those impressions into museum visitors and supporters. A fun project, we collaborated with the Vietnamese Cultural Alliance to develop an impactful PR campaign surrounding Courage to Rebuild, which is a public art project that commemorated the 40th anniversary of Vietnamese immigration to the U.S. The project began with an international call for artists, and the artists that were selected created a public sculpture to be installed at Asian Garden Mall in the city of Westminster. And the goal of the campaign was to generate awareness surrounding the Vietnamese-American achievements in the U.S. and the history of the community through this commemorative Last one. ACE has supported the PR and marketing initiatives of OC Parks since 2009, and OC Parks manages nearly 60,000 acres of parkland and coastal facilities, as well as open space for the County of Orange. And our scope of work includes the development of press material, media communication, management of media-related events, social media strategy, marketing, creative development, and reporting on all communication. We support the park's social media strategy to increase awareness online, gain digital followers that convert into park visitors, and really engage with the community socially. Creation of engaging video content is a key element of the social media plan. And we also send ACE's social media team members onsite at events to capture and edit content real-time to utilize for stories, static posts, and the creation of reels. Go back. The image on the right is a photo of our OC Parks Summer Concert Series. So ACE produces the annual OC Parks Summer Concert Series and Sunset Cinema Series, which are held at regional parks across the county. We lead the production, programming, branding, design, marketing, advertising, PR, and sponsorship development for the series in its entirety. And when we began working on the series, just a few hundred people came out to the park to see free live music and movies. With strategic growth goals, we, you know, put in place to increase attendance and generate awareness about the parks through the series. By 2019, each concert was seeing thousands in attendance, and the series continues to grow year over year. So to give kind of a high-level overview of the work plan and budget that we included in the proposal, we engage in a strategic and thoughtful approach with each project, taking time to really understand all elements involved in order to develop the most effective plan for communication that will generate the most impactful result. In this case, that would be positioning City of Glendale as an exciting arts destination, driving more traffic and visitors to experience the art happenings, and generally promoting economic development through art. Our process begins with a strategic discovery phase, and we gather all information, the key assets, imagery, details available about the arts and culture events, exhibitions, and public art projects that are planned. And as part of that discovery process, we also will review and assess the current public arts projects and cultural programming, as well as the marketing plan and communications program that's in place. And with all that knowledge, we'll identify and set KPIs and goals for the duration of the project, and develop an annual communication plan that details the strategy and timeline of all communications tactics, which, in the proposal, included strategy planning and discovery, branding, creative and content creation, media planning and advertising, photography and video content capture, email marketing and digital social media, public relations campaign, event activations, reporting on all communication, website development, and contingency for any additional activities that come up. And here, we've outlined the estimated budget line items for each of the elements of the communications plan to anticipate how the budget may be dispersed with a not-to-exceed annual the annual two-year estimated cost. And with that, thank you again for having me here tonight. I look forward to your questions.
Thank you very much. And I think we have some questions here from the Dianne Councilmember Divine.
I don't know. I'm not sure who will answer this question, but on the printout, it says that the overall two-year estimated cost is $500,000. The staff report says shall not exceed a total of $500,000 from the Urban Art Fund over the course of four fiscal years.
Yes. Primarily, it's a, the bulk of the work will be done in the first two years, but there will be some other work to be done in the subsequent years, so.
So then in the first two years, it's $500,000 and then more the next few years?
No, no. I mean, the contract would not exceed $500,000 unless we return to council for some reason that we felt we wanted to continue the relationship. But it is, the bulk of it will be done in two years, but we wanted the flexibility in case of how timing works to go into subsequent years.
Okay. Now, this company, your company is going to be working with not only our arts and culture, but also our parks and rec and all of the departments? How does that, how does that work exactly?
So we will be the primary liaison. It's more if an event comes up, so it could be a nonprofit is doing an event in the city that we feel needs to be highlighted, we would want to also work with them. And with parks, if they were doing something arts related, we would work with them and we have had those discussions with the parks department.
So then ACE is there and when you, when something's going to happen, when we're going to have an event, then you call and say, here's the event?
In my experience, how it usually works is it would be a back and forth communication all the time.
Okay, okay. What's the total of your employees that you can do all of these events?
Thirteen.
Thirteen?
Thirteen.
Wow. Hardworking.
Thirteen in-house with also consultants to support.
Thank you.
And I want to go to councilmember Esatrian, but I just want to clarify one thing from last question of councilmember Divine. So when you're working with these other, let's say, parks or you're working with economic development, so it has to be something that's arts related?
Yeah, I mean, primarily, it's being funded from the Arts Urban Art Fund. And so if it is something that will put Glendale forward as an arts destination, that would be something we would, we would want to fund.
Okay, so there has to be a nexus with the arts, otherwise we can't really legitimately use those.
I believe there should be. I believe that's the right thing to do. And arts or cultural event.
Yeah, I think we should, you know, make that clear that there is a nexus, otherwise we're using arts impact monies, right, for non-arts activities and that wouldn't be appropriate. Okay, I'm sorry. Councilmember Esatrian?
The email marketing and social media, is that for content creation or is that actual budget for advertisement?
For social media, the advertising budget is, social media is included in the advertising budget. And the social media is actually content creation, hosting, community management, creating content for multiple platforms, email marketing as well as template creation, development of email marketing content dissemination.
And then the website development has a price tag of $40,000.
Yeah.
Can you please break that down for me because coming from this world, this, that number just really stands out for me.
Sure. You know, the website development price is going to depend on what we end up deciding to do. If it's a light refresh of a website, look and feel that's incorporating more of the arts branding, it won't be anywhere near that number. If we end up deciding to create a whole new website through a UX high-level design process, it could be close to that number. So we wanted to allow for flexibility in either direction. Also for a multi-year project, websites do tend to need updating on a regular basis, so that includes monthly maintenance of the website as well.
And then I think the big question I have is, a lot of the stuff that you showcased was in English. What's your plan for reaching out to ethnic medias, doing these in different languages? Do you have translation services in-house? Do you contract out?
We do.
What's the plan for that?
Excuse me, sorry. Yes, we contract out for translation services, but our marketing plan will include international media, multicultural marketing tactics. A case study that we didn't demonstrate for County of Orange, for example, we had a very successful campaign with QR codes, on flyers and marketing material that linked out to announcements and media material in various languages to reach different audience groups, which is something that we were recommending for this project as well.
Okay.
Are you, any more questions?
I'm fine.
Okay, councilmember Esatrian?
Yeah, so, thank you. Let me just start off with the last answer that you gave regarding the QR codes. How do you gauge success or the efficacy of those QR codes?
Well, they're trackable with linking out to the website that they're going to link out to.
And so have you seen those being effective in terms of doing outreach to?
We have seen those being effective. I don't have the numbers in front of me today, but they definitely were an effective effort and a new effort that we implemented last year for that project in particular. You know, art has the power to reach all audiences of all backgrounds and so I think, you know, different art programs are going to appeal to different groups. And for each one of those projects, we'll come up with a multicultural marketing plan that will reach those audiences that we want to communicate with.
Okay. I just hope that's not purely reliant on QR codes. I think QR codes are a useful tool, but I think that different communities, different age groups, different ethnic groups all consume information in different ways.
Absolutely.
So I would hope that it's not just a box we're checking off and saying we have a QR code that links to different language translated flyers and that, that will suffice.
Definitely.
So in the larger picture, how is staff and how will you measure success in terms of implementing your vision for making Glendale an arts destination?
You know, our approach is really to develop a comprehensive brand ID for the public arts program that can be woven through all marketing material and really make the arts initiatives recognizable for the city of Glendale. We're going to create a schedule of media milestones and activation events that surround the schedule of public art exhibitions and cultural events. We're going to offer unique media opportunities versus exclusives to high-performing regional and national media sources. We're looking to host public opening receptions, VIP media and influencer events, unveiling events and other public programs surrounding the art. This in addition to the comprehensive marketing campaign that includes advertising, email marketing and social media tactics to generate that awareness. And that, you know, the goal is to convert that awareness into attendance and visitors, you know, that would promote that economic development and that we would be able to track those, those numbers and see that growth, not only from visitors, but from impressions and media value that's generated from the promotions.
So I know that art sometimes is going to have an intangible impact, like we won't be able to measure it, but in where, in areas where you're doing things where you're able to convert that to measurable indicators, I would be interested in seeing that. I'd like to know if we're investing money in hiring a firm and we're very fortunate and grateful that you've, you know, requested and asked to help us with this and you're being considered. I want to be able to make sure that we have something to show for it and I can say, okay, well, before you started, we were here, after you started, we are now here. And, you know, I think that, I don't, I'm not just interested in the pure rebranding, bells, whistles, a facelift for the website. If, if the goal is to engage, whether it's the Glendale community or communities outside of Glendale, to come into Glendale and appreciate what we have here, I want to be able to see how staff is hoping to measure that as well as yourself.
Yeah, if I may, part of our first approach and discovery process is to understand where things are at now so that we can set benchmarks and KPIs for growth. For our media planning, we use a third-party platform called Cision, which produces impressions and media value per clip, per mention, as well as another platform called Agora Pulse that values social media and interactions and engagements. So once we're able to set those benchmarks and KPIs, we will have metrics to show. We'll have metrics to show on all the communication tactics that are within the plan. And that will be part of our monthly analysis, making sure that we're meeting those, those goals and, and those growth metrics that we put in place.
And, you know, it has been mentioned, I think it was also discussed during the Arts and Culture Commission meeting, the uniqueness of our community. It's unlike any other, just in, for no other reason, because of the unique cultural makeup of the city. There are no other cities in the United States that have the presence of a very small, yet in the arts, very active community like the Armenian-American community. I don't know what your familiarity is with the community. I'm hoping that you're going to, if you don't have one, that you're going to do a study into familiarizing yourself with that, as well as with our Filipino community and Korean community, Spanish-speaking communities. My goal for the arts, and I mentioned this to staff, is to have a lot of underrepresented voices in the arts elevated and not simply try and import what some other people think is art to Glendale. We have lots of talented artists here in this community. We have a lot of folks who work in the arts and the entertainment. I'm looking to find ways to highlight and elevate those voices and what's already great about our, our community here. So with that, that's all I have in terms of questions.
Do you have any good comment?
Sure.
Thank you. Glendale does absolutely have a very unique cultural composition and history. And as we are here today, you notice it aspires to be an arts destination and I think with everything going on, it's the perfect time to bring more energy and put focus on illuminating Glendale's arts and culture initiatives and community that is here. You know, our office is in Costa Mesa, our team is located across Southern California. We're in Orange County, LA, Inland Empire, and we represent destinations across California. We excel at connecting with local media and developing that relationship. But in many of our client partnerships, sometimes our partner wants to keep local media close and wants us to focus on larger initiatives like regional and national coverage, but we can collaborate in either way. But, you know, that regional to national broader reach outside of the local lens is typically why we are brought in and engaged, to bring new attention and awareness to projects and places, drive increased visibility. And, you know, we really feel like we could be helpful to this project to have that outside viewpoint and make recommendations. We've had experience working with, well, in, I should say, the city of Glendale recently. We opened the newest Messis kebab, the first standalone restaurant. Restaurants is also something that we work closely in, so we had the pleasure of working with the family to open that location not that long ago. Also, we've spent quite a bit of time just beginning to familiarize ourselves with the arts initiatives in the community, so we'll continue that process if we're able to move forward.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, I just want to say, look, I know that this has gone through a process, staff has worked very hard on it. It went through the Arts and Culture Commission, went through multiple steps. Personally, I have my reservations about spending a lot of money on PR efforts, given kind of the experience we've had in the past. And councilmember Najarian, I don't know if councilmember Divine was around when the Glendale Animated Initiative was foisted upon the city by a out-of-town PR firm in Nashville, but that was out of state as well. I'm hoping that your experience with some of the other agencies in Southern California will not replicate, will be different than the experience we've had in the past. I'm supportive of this initiative and I'm, and I will eagerly await to see what the results are.
Okay, councilmember Esatrian, you have additional comments?
I mean, I actually made some of these comments during the staff briefing yesterday, but, and I'm hoping that, you know, we can have the larger communication conversation during our work plan. From what I've seen with the kind of communication that's been out from the different consulting firms that we've hired, I have to say that I'm not happy. I haven't been happy. And I'm hoping that, you know, we, if we move forward with this, that we are gauging this in a way to make sure that it really is servicing. I don't want to see a cookie cutter approach where, you know, what I see with a lot of these consulting firms, they'll take the same flyer, change the wording around, change the logo and then, you know, send it back out without putting really thought into it. And recognizing that AI is a thing now, for that content to actually be creative and thoughtful to our community. The one thing I will note, knowing at least the Armenian community that's really in the arts, they operate in silos. And this is a conversation I've had with our library director in the past, that there is a vibrant art scene, but they, you know, one doesn't know that the other's hosting something. And I'm hoping that we are able to, through this process, bring these different worlds together that share the same love of art that we all do. And so I'm, I'm going to support this with the understanding that we're going to have benchmarks. I don't want to see surveys like we've seen for the North Brand Project where it was a survey that took us to nowhere and got us 34 responses. So I'm cautiously optimistic is what I'd like to say and I recognize that our commission has gone through a process for this and has approved this and our library director wants to see this through. So I'm supportive, but I would like some sort of report back, Gary, at some point on how things are moving forward.
Thank you. And councilmember Najarian, do you have any comments? No. So I would just echo some of what I heard and I was actually going to channel Mr. Milano who's sitting behind you. I was going to channel Mr. Milano and talk about metrics and measurables and KPIs and that kind of thing, because he's always pushing us to be more data-driven and it is something that's important that we do. So without getting into the details, because you did give a lot of answers to councilmember Esatrian, but I would just say at a high level, you know, I think we need help, but I hope that, you know, as, as we're into this process, maybe a year out and certainly at the end of the two years, when you say most of the work is going to be done, that you're able to come to us and you're able to say, here's the difference. And to the extent it could be quantified, that's great, but, you know, trying to get the benchmark of where we are today, you know, as an arts destination, what's the perception of Glendale? I don't know exactly how you do that, but I would like to see us do that. I would like to see that in a year, two years, we can say this was money well-spent. And so I think that's all I'll say. I want to thank, you know, Dr. Schaefer, I want to thank Jennifer Fukutomi-Jones, who I know was certainly heavily involved, and the Arts and Culture Commission. I see Jane Vire, our president of the commission, but I know everybody on the commission worked hard on this and it was unanimous. And so that's also encouraging to see. So I'm in support of moving forward this as well. Oh, thank you. Excuse me. So we have some speakers. So you are relieved of your, of your duties and now we have Stephen Meek.
Good evening, Mayor, city council staff. Thank you. Glendale has a great community, full of arts of all kinds. I'm in complete agreement with the hiring of this agency to promote Glendale and the Arts and Culture Commission, Director of our Library Arts and Culture, they're all in agreement with hiring them for marketing and branding. We do need to reach out more and let the world, or at least greater LA, know about all the wonderful things that are going on in our community. Our many park events, our exhibits, our performances are all wonderful and we should market these to a wider area. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Meek. And our next speaker is Alan Dish.
Council, I look forward to this measure. I look forward to watching commercials about Glendale. Advertising is the fuel which drives desire in our capitalist society and I would like to simply praise it. Yes, first of all, branding, I have no problem with. Yes, first of all, branding, I have no problem with Glendale wanting to improve its image, to use the old-fashioned term, like, a good old-fashioned ministry of propaganda. I mean, okay, I don't know this company, Ace, I imagine they're nice people, and in a very naive way, I imagine they're here tonight to, like, learn about our council. So, I'd like to share some tips, as someone who has lived in Glendale for all his life. This marketing company will find itself in good company in Glendale, incidentally, with its goal of branding Glendale. As a good Glendalean, I hope you notice how the word "brand" itself is already part of Glendale's identity and history, first in the sense that Leslie C. Brand was one of the pioneers of our city, and second, because, like, our main street is named Brand, so it was already Brand himself who lived up to his name and then made, basically, Glendale a brand of sorts, and I like this gesture of repeating Mr. Brand's, like, basic gesture in the sense of being faithful to what he was doing, I think, which was broadcasting, celebrating, putting Glendale on the map. As for outsourcing, sorry, what is there to say? It's one of the most beautiful inventions I can think of. Let me list four examples of outsourcing in our own city of Glendale. We have a public, a public square, the Americana, yes, but it's outsourced to Mr. Rick Caruso, and they do a good job of running it. The piano at the Americana, again, there's no human playing it, it's outsourced, and it's playing ma music, which is one of my favorite genres of music, muzak, it's called. Like, it's literally defined as music you're not supposed to listen to even. Griffith Park, okay, it's not ours, it's LA's, but like, it's very, it's very close to us, it functions as a kind of central park for, for all of us, I'm there quite often. Finally, the snow that we got, wasn't it wonderful how it was, it didn't come here in downtown Glendale, it was up there, outsourced to La Conyada, La Corcanta, and it was wonderful. Didn't a former council member, incidentally, do something exactly similar? I think it was Dave Weaver, when he dis, or, he tried to relocate some of impact fees from South Glendale by creating Duke Magin Park. So, good luck, is all I can say. Thank you.
Okay. I think at this point, I'll take a motion.
I'll move the item.
I'll second.
And, okay, roll call, please.
Councilmember Asatrian?
Yes.
Divine?
Yes.
Kasakian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Brotman?
Yes.
And, Mr. Mayor, I know that Dr. Schaefer said you're doing something with arts and science for Glendale, right? Hopefully, you guys will remember to do something with Leland Hartwell, the only Nobel Prize winner we have from Glendale, and a graduate of Glendale High School, who won the Nobel Prize for Medicine in the early 2000s. See if you can incorporate him into something.
You're always a font of historical knowledge.
Glendale High has a Nobel laureate.
Okay. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Thanks. Okay, what is our next action item?
Next action item is City Manager regarding fiscal year 2023 to 2034 City Council Work Plan and Council Follow-Up List. One motion to approve the fiscal year 2023-34 work plan. Two motion directing staff regarding the council follow-up list.
Member City Council. Mayor had to step out for a second. Actually, correction, and the title and the recording that was read into record is 23, 24, not 34. Apologies for that. Our point? Okay, Member City Council, we are, this item is related, as you can see, the work plan and council follow-up list. As a way of background, as a way of background, on March 21st of 2023, we held a council workshop with the objectives of creating consensus on norms of good governance, as well as establishing council priorities for fiscal year 23-24. And this would provide a roadmap to guide our efforts as far as delivering projects and programs with the limited resources that we have. Prior to the workshop, our consultant had conducted interviews with individual council members and the mayor, and as a result of those interviews, identified and generated nine general priority focus areas, and during the workshop, as part of the discussions and deliberations, and through the process of dot voting, council identified and selected four priorities that are listed as financial sustainability, economic development, mobility, traffic, and pedestrian safety, and lastly, improving operations and efficiency of city government. Based on these four priority areas, then staff took comments that were made by individual council members during the workshop, and took those comments and generated programs and projects that's part of this proposed work plan. There are actually 59 of them, and they have tried their best to relate these line items in the work plan to, directly to those comments, most of those comments. Admittedly, there are some that we couldn't fit into one of these priority areas. So, this evening, we're seeking a formal adoption of four priorities, as well as the work plan. Can you go to Slide 6? Again, today's task at hand is adopt these four priority focus areas. We also have the proposed work plan that's attached as Exhibit 1 to the staff report. Council has the option of approving. My hope is that council can approve this evening, this work plan, as is, as submitted, as proposed, or make modifications as you deem necessary. During the exercise, and this evening, I'd also like to go over what we call the council follow-up list, that's attached as Exhibit 2 to your staff report. We currently have 21 active, I correct, we, we just had made an error, we actually have 22 active items that, some shape or form, we, staff have either started working on them, and they have made some progress on them, there are a number of items that we haven't had the chance to start working on. So, it is my hope that through the discussions this evening, you can direct us whether to delete some of these that are no longer a priority to, for this council, and, and perhaps we can revisit them in the future, if that's council's desire, or we can completely eliminate them, and hopefully fold these items into the one work plan, the proposed work plan, so we will not have two parallel lists that we work off of. Again, we're asking direction on new council requests, that will be towards the end of the presentation, and I, as a reminder, based on the number of items that you will see in the work plan, plus the follow-up list of council requests, plus the carryover items, it's a substantial list of items that staff has undertaken and will undertake to, to accomplish, plus, this is on top of daily and routine operational needs and services that we provide to the city. So, with that, I am going to ask Elena Bolbolyan to walk you through these two lists, one by one, and I'm hoping that collectively this council can provide direction moving forward.
Thank you, Mr. Galanian. So, Mayor Brotman and members of the council, the first task at hand is to review the proposed work plan. So, again, this is Exhibit 1. I know we're going to be asking for a lot of pieces, but I will walk you through everything tonight. So, if you could please pull out Exhibit 1 of your report. So, what we're asking for the first order of business from council is to either approve the work plan as submitted by staff with the four categories noted, or if council feels that there are items that should be on that work plan within those four categories, now would be the time to share that feedback with staff, so that we can modify the work So, again, the four priorities were financial sustainability, economic development, mobility, traffic, and pedestrian safety, and improving operations and efficiency of city government. So, under financial sustainability, staff has proposed four items. Under economic development, staff has proposed six items. Mobility, traffic, and pedestrian safety, staff has identified 13 items. And improving operations and efficiency of city government has 28 items, because it's a more general category that every department can fit into, whereas some of the others are specific to certain departments. What you'll also notice is a number of items that have been highlighted, and those denote items that are part of the current year's work plan, which is 22-23 fiscal year, and those items that are highlighted are items that staff anticipates will continue beyond June 30th, and so that's why they're being incorporated into next year's work plan. So, are there any comments from council as it pertains to adding items that you see or you deem important under these categories?
So, this is the work plan now. We're not talking about the request list, is that right?
We're, we're going to, we're going to go through, we're going to go through both items, yeah. So, the work plan, and then I'm going to go through all of the active items under the council follow-up list, and those will be added to the work plan. So, my first question is, the proposed work plan, are there any edits? We'll go through the council follow-up list, one by one.
Mr. Mayor, Member City Council, in the interest of time, it will be a very long night if we were to go over 59 current proposed work plan items, plus carryover of 14, that makes 73 items. So, you have it in front of you, it was part of the council staff report, and we're opening it up for questions, and if you have, you ask for any clarifications on that list before you decide to adopt or not adopt that plan.
Okay.
I have one. Yeah, I have a question. Can we take number 16 off of improve operations and efficiency of city government, because I think that's already, that's already completed, done, right?
Digitized forms, 700s?
Yes. I think, aren't, isn't that already done? I was told in the meeting that that, that's already been done. The boards and commissions has not been done, but the other has, is that correct? Incorrect.
I can turn to our city clerk, Suzie Abadjan, to provide some clarification.
Yes, we, we have, you can complete your 700 forms digitally.
Yeah, so that, that one's already done, so we can eliminate number 16.
Clerk Abadjan, was this intended for the boards and commissions, or?
No, that was, this one is, this is for the 700, but the, the next one is for boards and commissions, and I don't believe that one's already finished, is it?
I don't think, no, it's not.
Okay, so, if there's council consensus, we'll remove item 16.
Can I, can I just interject for one moment? So, on the 700 forms, are you sure it's not for 700 forms for boards and commissioners? Because if I can recall correctly, we do form 700 submissions for all employees and staff and council, but because boards and commissioners are not staff necessarily, they are not able to do it using the system, the digitized system that we have now. So, before we take this off, I, I would like some clarification on that, if that's the case or not. It doesn't have to be now, it can be whenever, but that's why I believe this is on there.
Good question, Councilmember Kasakian. I want to give our city clerk an opportunity to respond, because if council adopts this, we, we always have an opportunity to come back when adjusted, but if we can get clarification this evening, so we can adopt the accurate list.
So, we have digitized the process for the 700 forms for employees and city council, and we could, could do the same, a similar process for also boards and commissions.
So, the intention is to do this for boards and commission?
Yes.
And that's why it's on there?
Right.
Can I? On that, actually, on that item, I had in my notes, if we could just combine 16 and 17, Clerk Abadjan, because it's, it's just, it's about just digitizing your applications for boards and commissions and the 700 form submissions, would you be comfortable with that?
That's fine.
That makes sense, Councilmember Kasakian.
And then, um...
You had more, right?
Yeah, sorry.
You go ahead, run through.
Okay.
Just go one by one, let's run through all of our...
So, for number 18 and 19, I recognize that it's something that Clerk Abadjan put forth, but I think one of the larger discussions that we had during our work plan meeting was an overarching communications plan, and how we move forward with communication, and we just talked about it for, for the consulting firm. I would like to see this be revised to increase communication and advertisement across all city departments, using, you know, social media and new age technologies. As part of that, I think, if you want to take the language, if my colleagues would agree to that, I have, if, if we look in the back, I think staff had highlighted that in the report, the reimagine and restructure cities' communication and outreach and public affairs structure. I feel like this is a theme just across the board, when we're talking about enforcement versus education. This works into all the ordinances that we've passed, and we have things in the books, but we're not investing money and infrastructure into actually educating the public, including our recycling programs and our plastics, and, so, I would ask that, this not just pertain to city clerk, but we take the language for the communications in general.
Okay, let me, let me ask City Manager to respond to that.
Mr. Mayor, Member City Council, Councilmember Asatrian, that's a good point, and we've had this conversation previously, you're right. Instead of, if I may, I suggest, instead of saying increase, I would, I would suggest the language to say devise a plan, or bring forward a plan that will cover increased communication, outreach, use of social media, so that staff and I can put a plan together for your consideration, and then you can provide direction as to which way you want to go. And that will include all the outreach efforts pertaining to new ordinances that this council has adopted.
I'm, I'm totally fine, yeah, I wasn't, so I wasn't suggesting that we use the same language, I was saying, on the backend, my box, I actually basically have it as, as you recommend it. Thank you.
Okay, so is there consensus on that one? Can we move on? Okay.
Do you want to just have people just go, and then...
No, why don't, you, you want to go through all of yours?
No, because I, I don't want, I, I think it would be better if, yeah.
You need more? Okay, okay. Councilmember Kasakian?
So, there's a lot, there's a lot to take in here, and I don't know how we're going to be able to, I don't know where we begin, where we end. I mean, ultimately, I'd like to see some of those things that are on here just come to their completion, but what is it specifically, Ms. Bolbolyan, that you would like from individual council members this evening?
Just as Mr., just as Councilmember Asatrian noted, you know, revisions, or as Councilmember Divine noted, combining of items or clarifications, or if there's an item that council deems as a priority that staff has not listed on here, that's what I, that's the kind of feedback we're looking for.
I mean, there's enough in here, this is like a Herculean task, right? This will take you to get through all this. I sometime, I somewhat hesitate to add something to it, but... I sometime, I somewhat hesitate to add something to it, but I also, you know, feel that we, I also feel like we reserve the right, in some respects, to be able to add something if we see that does require some sense of urgency, right? Like, there was on one of these sheets, there was the issue of CUPs or limitation of the number of permits for stores or establishments that sell firearms, and, you know, obviously it may not be something that is at the forefront of everyone's mind, but anytime there's an unfortunate incident, as there have been in the last few months, or repeatedly occur, it's something that I think should move up to the top of the priority list.
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Yes, please.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, Member of the City Council, Councilmember Kusakian, that's a valid point, and I was going to cover that at the end of this exercise, and we fully understand that if there's an emergency, if there's an urgent matter that council directs, wants to direct staff to look into, then we can definitely add it to this work plan with a caveat that, once this is adopted, and this is the absolute maximum that staff can handle based on their evaluation of their resources, if we add a new item, then something on this adopted list will have to either be eliminated or delayed to future years. But this is not your last opportunity, again, if there are items that require immediate action, they have, there's an urgency because of funding perhaps, or new legislation, then by all means, we can add it to the work plan.
Okay, so let's just...
I don't have anything else at this moment.
At that point, then, if we look at, under mobility, traffic and pedestrian safety, develop and implement automated speed enforcement pilot program, do we know that Assemblywoman Friedman is gonna bring that legislation forward? It didn't pass. I see the chief...
Chief said, yeah.
Because if, if it's not imminent, then, you know, I think it's something we can...
Mayor and council members, I can't provide you a definitive answer. It is currently be considered up in our legislators up north as, as we speak, quite frankly, over the last handful of weeks. I feel cautiously optimistic about it, and that the opportunity for us to be one of those first pilot cities, I think is a real possibility, but I certainly can't give you a definitive answer, it's in the works. I know, I met with, myself personally met with Assemblymember Friedman, and she's a big supporter of it, she's pushing it hard, but time will tell.
Is this, is this, if I, and I think, I know you're right about that, is this something that we could use as an emergency? If it does pass, then we can bring it back and say, let's, we can take it off now, and then bring it back when it happens? Because I think it's fantastic, there, we, we were all excited about that to begin last year when we had the, we thought we were gonna get the program.
Most definitely, yeah, most definitely, Councilmember Devine, and this is a placeholder, essentially, and when and if, if and when it happens, then staff's ready to, to move forward with it, but, point taken.
A couple of things, she did reintroduce it, I believe it passed, I believe it passed through the assembly, but I may be wrong, it may be in the assembly appropriations, anyway, it's moving through the process.
I believe it's with appropriations.
You believe it's with appropriations, okay, so...
We get out the other side of that.
And that usually means we might have some trouble in senate appropriations.
Then it goes to senate appropriations.
I'll leave that to you all.
We can work on our friend, Mr. Fortantino, but, but it does say pending state passage, so if, Councilmember Devine, if it doesn't pass, it's, it says pending, so rather, I'd rather just keep it there, but knowing that, knowing that...
I'm, I'm just trying to make room for other suggestions, because I think that's... I'm just trying to make room for other suggestions, because I think that's what the object is tonight, am I wrong or right?
To the extent council has new items, yes, but if council is satisfied with the work plan and just with those minor modifications, then that won't be necessary.
Okay, okay, because I'm, I'm counting how many we're taking off, and, you know, right now, I'm up to three, so like, if others have, like, three that they want to bring on, we have a, you know, we can place them in there. That's, that's what I thought the objective was.
And again, Mayor Brotman, Councilmember Devine, and council members, we don't have to have absolutely 59, I mean, the, the less number of items, I think you can see your smile on Department Head's face, it's a bit rough there, they can get to them faster.
Okay. Councilmember Najarian?
So generally, let me start out by saying, I think we have paralyzed ourself and staff with the incredibly high number of requests that we've given. There is no way staff can get to even half of these, and we continue to add on and add on and add on. It is incumbent on us to trim this down to the very highest priority items that can realistically be done in the next year with staff, I mean, staff isn't just sitting there waiting for something to do, here's our work plan, they're already working on tons of things, and by pushing them further, we're risking shoddy work, you know, improper outreach where outreach is required, so we've gotta cut this, listen, we've gotta cut this way down, way down, so I'm ready to cut, I'm ready to cut, let me just go through it here, and, and there more may come to mind.
Councilmember Najarian, that's, that's a perfect preamble to our next chapter, part of this exercise. I believe you're referring to the council follow-up list?
I'm talking about what we got right now, on exhibit one.
Right, this work plan, Department Heads with their staff have evaluated based on their available resources, that they can manage to at least start working on based on your established priorities.
Will they have nothing to do if we remove one or two of these?
Well, then, we're going to...
Let me get through.
Let's hear, let's hear...
Let me get through. Number three, on financial sustainability, the implement the infrastructure bond for roads and underground utilities, I'm not, I don't think we're ready to go to that at this point. I think there's so many other immediate needs that we have, rather than fool around with all the engineering, the financial evaluation and analysis with consultants on number three. On economic development, number four, complete design and begin implementation of improvements at Rockhaven? Hello, we've been sued, we've been sued by the Friends of Rockhaven, we have no idea how a judge is gonna react, how a judge is gonna rule, and the work that we do, whether it's engineering, analysis, actual construction, may all be to not, if a judge says no, you save every single bungalow on that property, or you can wipe everything off that property, whatever the issue is. We're spinning our wheels and wasting our time having to do anything with Rockhaven, and it wasn't our initiation, it was Friends of Rockhaven that shot the first, you know, shot across our bow. Rockhaven should be off our books at this point till we know where the courts are going. Number six is market the city as an arts destination, I think that's what we just did, perhaps, with the ACE Group?
Yes, that was the first step, Councilmember Najarian.
Remember, on mobility, traffic and pedestrian safety, I can't say too much about the advancing the Verdugo Wash project, it's gonna be a lot of money, I'm not, you know, because there may be some conflict interests, I'm not gonna deal with that. Number six, conduct the weekly enforcement focused on education, I think that's a routine standard operating procedure in our police department at this point, so we can drop number six. Number eight, complete the bus shelters and shade study and implement recommendations. I made a announcement three months ago that Metro is working on this issue, and is gonna be reaching out to the individual municipalities to assist in that, so I don't know if we have to spend a lot of time on number eight. Increase bus ridership...
Councilmember Najarian, if, if I may...
Yes.
No, 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 I know, but, do you guys want to, like, as he's going through them, do you want to decide if you want to...
You wanna discuss each one?
Just take it off or not, or, we're gonna go through it again?
Let him say what he wants to take off, and if...
I only have about six or seven more. Increase bus ridership, I mean, that's a general, that should be a general policy, I don't think we need a specific report back from staff as to what to do. Number 11, the high visibility crosswalks, I think we're already doing that, I mean, I remember voting on this a few months ago, we picked it out, you talked about great colors, and you don't want the USC colors, and all that.
If I, if I may, apologies for interrupting, so the highlighted items are carryovers from last work plan, adopted work plan, and you're absolutely right, your, your recollection is correct, you did vote on it, but there's more work to be done. So we started it last fiscal year, it's the continuation.
So if we're continuing, okay, so it's, it's neither here nor there, okay. Identify the public parking lots for asphalt resurfacing, Monica, Monica Campania can tell us what the parking lots are that need the resurfacing. That's 13 on mobility, traffic, and I think you pointed those out, isn't that done? Maybe that's one of those that's already been identified.
Yes.
Okay. Create the, this is number 12 on improved operations, create the transparency audits and accountability bureau to include quarterly public reporting. I mean, I don't want to create a new bureau in the city at this point, does that make sense at this point?
I'm going to invite Chief, this is one of the, his initiatives and vision for the department.
All right, Chief.
It's okay, pleasure to be on with you again. Transparency, accountability and audit bureau is something I'm creating within the organization, coincides with one of the asks that I have pushed forward to the city manager coming into this budget, and deals with alongside public reporting, transparency, data collection, and it's pushing it out, deals a lot with state, I hate to say unfunded, because most of them are, mandates that have come down, things like RIPA, Senate Bill Two, and a great deal of work that has been created for law enforcement that we were not giving staff for, nevertheless, we have to get it done, and it has to be done appropriately. Important work that's gonna happen out of that bureau, God willing, after July 1, within the police department for internal...
Okay, Chief, I'll let you go on that one.
Thank you, sir.
So, I'm sorry, let me just, so this is something that needs to be done in order to comply with state mandates?
A great deal of the work that's gonna happen in that bureau, yes, correct.
Okay, you got, you got, I withdraw my, my objection to that, just about two more, three more. Implement the Aquius ozone technology for park restroom maintenance, what? I mean, if we're gonna procure a different type of cleaning item, let's procure a different type of cleaning item. Why does this have to, why do we need a report to council that, oh, we've got this new Aquius ozone technology? Just do it, I mean, we want, the policy is keep the restrooms clean, the fact that we're gonna go out and procure a new type of cleaning method shouldn't have to come back to council. I don't want to, I don't want to know how you clean toilets with an Aquius ozone technology.
Okay, so let's clarify that, do all these items require something to come back to council, are these, you're just telling us these are projects that staff is working on?
Mr. Mayor, Mayor City Council, Councilmember Najarian, it, it depends, a city manager's favorite two words, it depends, right? So if, if purchasing or entering into a contract is required, it will by routine come in front of council. Based on council, one of the council's four priority of improving operations, departments have come up with this, with these, this list of new initiatives and programs that fits and aligns with your priority. Now, depending again on the contract amount, it may have to come in front of you, and as you see in our council reports, we make reference to, this is, this was the priority, one of the priorities that you adopted, hence we creating this new project or program. If you don't want to see it, anyway...
Just go through the...
Okay, I just have, I'm just gonna go to one more. Well, the fleet electrification, we've already decided on that, I think we're moving forward with that.
Which number is that?
That's number three on the items not fitting into the above priority areas, I mean, we're, I think we were moving on that, and we made decisions on funding the budget for that, we're moving, what, the five, 10, 7 million over, part of that is involving the electrification.
Well, Councilmember Najarian, actually, council gave staff direction, you are correct, to move forward with fleet electrification, but the, the whole process, it's pretty lengthy, and as been reported to council, requires substantial amount of funding. So the intent is to keep this alive, that's what we've added to, to, to this list for adoption, so that council knows we haven't dropped it, because it was council's priority. It, it is going to require periodic check-ins with council, and, and as part of the process, requesting funding for it if that's still council's direction.
Okay, my last, Mr. Mayor, is implementing new staff mobile communications and expanding training in the libraries, I mean, I know that we spend a huge amount of our budget for mobile communications for police, that's number six on items not fitting. I don't know what the security system is in the libraries, I haven't been informed of incidents that require communications from the, from the reference room to the children's room, and, and every time police and fire get a set of mobile devices, it's only a few short years later where we've got to upgrade at a huge cost, so I'm not sure that's necessary, I haven't been given any information as to why it's necessary.
Can we ask Dr. Shaefer to shed some light on this initiative?
Mr. Mayor, council members, Councilmember Najarian, there was a murder in a library in the Midwest, Tulsa, Oklahoma, where I served for six years, that is, this is the second time that's happened in the last few years, where someone's come in with a gun and shot and killed someone, staff obviously is distressed by this, it's become apparent that their, the speaker system within the library does not penetrate into the basement, so that is something that needs to be addressed, because we have staff working down there, and so the idea is about safety and security and improving that at the library.
I think that's a good policy to improve safety, but to actually say we need a, a mobile communication, we're talking about radios, everyone's gonna have a radio on them, and ask the chief how long his radios are viable, there may be other ways to do that. I mean, I think it's a huge expense, something that happens in Tulsa, Oklahoma, is a long way from here, they've shot, they've shot council members before, we're not issuing gun permits to, you know, to council members, I've tried, but they're not issuing them.
Well, we, we don't want to have armed officers in the library, though they often visit and help us.
Okay, so that's all I have, Mr. Mayor, I mean...
Mr. Mayor, if I may, since Councilmember Najarian have finished his comments, right? If I can, trying to recap it and see if I can get consensus...
Yes.
From council. So, under financial sustainability, item number three, regarding issuance of infrastructure bond?
I, no, okay, can I, can I make a general comment? Okay, again, my understanding is, all these are things that staff believes they can do, maybe not complete, but they can do, they can and want to be working on these in our priorities over the course of this year. So unless there's something on here I think that we are adamantly opposed to, we should leave this list as it is. All these items are, I guess, most of these items, if there's a dollar figure associated with it or a policy decision, they're all gonna come back to us. So I think that's the question, staff is saying that this list is something that it can, that it can do, yeah, and so I don't want to start yanking things off, like, for instance, infrastructure bond, I think is a very important thing, and I think we should start looking at it now, I think it's a cost-saving measure over time, and if staff thinks they can start working on it, I think that's great. Some of the other things...
About Rockhaven.
I don't think we need to take it off, nothing is gonna happen, I mean...
Don't, careful what you say.
Well...
Because we're in litigation.
Okay, there are, well, maybe I won't say anything then, but I, basically, we are in litigation, but it doesn't mean we can't be thinking about what we want Rockhaven to be. So I think we should keep this on the burner, because it is something that we want to be working on, and we may not work on it right now, the litigation may change the direction we take, but it doesn't mean we take it off and say, this is not, you know, you know, this is not an issue that we want to continue to keep on.
But is this one that we might use as an emergency, that after the litigation is completed, then we can revisit what, what the next steps are with Rockhaven?
Yes. I mean, if it makes us feel better to take this one off because of a very specific circumstance, and then we'll bring it back...
You can always add it to the list.
If things change, I'm okay with that. If it's, the optics are, are better to have it off.
I'm, I'm in favor of that.
Is there consensus on that?
On, I'm sorry, which one, Mr. Mayor?
Rock Haven, just kind of parking that, taking it off the list for now. And we'll bring it back if and when things are conducive to doing that.
I agree to park it. Not remove it, but just pause it if that's what your suggestion is.
I'm, you know, there's also the concern I have regarding the optics of that. I'm not, I, I hear my colleagues, I hear Mr. Councilmember Najarian and his comments on some of these. I'm, as I said earlier, there's almost 60 items on this. If staff gets even through a third of these and is able to bring these back, it's significant. But on something like this, if we take it off or if we put it in a parking spot or whatever elsewhere, I think it allows for a perception that we're, we're not pursuing it as earnestly as we've said we're going to. So I wouldn't necessarily support the parking of that.
Okay.
Just a point of clarification, if I may. We're not, we're not going to, with the exception of the city attorney's office, we're not going to work on Rock Haven project until such time that we have a resolution of this litigation.
Right, so being there or not being there really doesn't change anything.
Can I? Mayor Brotman.
Yes.
City manager, can you correct me if I'm wrong here? This list is comprised because of our work plan meeting, right? You guys took what, what our discussion was on that day? And based off of the comments, you came up with this list based on the staff that we have?
Yes, Councilmember Satya, Member of City Council. As a follow-up to the workshop on March 21st, you are correct. Council selected four priority areas, as well as made suggestions during their comments that staff have tried to relate to these priority areas and added and generated projects and program that directly relate to the comments that were made during that workshop.
So these are basically staff's recommendation based off of our workshop that happened in March.
Correct.
Correct? Within those four areas.
Correct.
And so we, we are at liberty to, to change any of these to match it to whatever it is that we actually wanted or attempted to pursue during that workshop.
Correct.
Okay.
Now or in the future?
Right, it's not like a forever hold your peace.
Hopefully now, for the most part, so that we don't have a long list of future items to be added to this work plan, once council adopts it.
So based off of that, and if we're looking at the next fiscal year, I am okay with letting go of number three, under financial stability. I don't know. Where everybody else stands on that.
I'm not okay with that.
Okay. What else was there that Councilmember Najarian was trying to remember?
Mayor, was, Mr. Galanian, were you finished with Councilmember Najarian's?
I read.
List, list.
I, I was attempting to recap Councilmember Najarian's comments. But that's fine, we can do it one at a time. We talked about infrastructure bond. I don't see a consensus, but we'll, we'll keep it there. Just the word of caution that we are not going to be able to spend a lot of time and effort on this. We have, staff have already initiated at least contacting one consultant who potentially can help us. But this isn't going to be the highest priority. It's on the list so that staff knows this is a council priority and they will work on it as time and resources allow.
And, and what about the?
The next one was Rock Haven.
Aquius, no.
Well, let's, can we go, let's go in order.
We talked about.
Yeah, Rock Haven, we'll, we'll put a pause on it. We'll move it off the list for the time being until we have a resolution as far as the litigation's concerned.
Okay, then we have Verdugo Wash. I certainly don't want to touch that.
I think Councilmember Najarian just, and just made reference to it, but he's, he's.
I can't state a position on that.
Okay. So then we have this weekly enforcement.
Yes.
Which we're already working on. Can you just say what that is?
Chief Sid, can you provide some detail, please?
As the city manager touched on earlier, that's, I think, reflective of an ongoing or a carryover from last year. Councilmember Najarian is not often saying that those are part of routine duties. Granted, it's a part of, you know, Vision Zero initiative in trying to, you know, use a data-driven, data-driven approach to how we deploy our staff, do enforcement across the city, try to impact, you know, traffic collisions and traffic safety issues that we're seeing. But it really just speaks to our enforcement efforts that we're taking on a daily basis, particularly out of our traffic bureau.
So are you saying that this could be a placeholder or a, we can?
I would be saying that in, in reality, that's not going anywhere anytime soon for the next handful of years, maybe for the foreseeable future.
Thank you, so we can take that one off because, because he's doing it, they're doing it, right? Am I right?
Been doing it, are doing it, and will continue to do it.
That doesn't need to be on this list.
Well, well, I mean, my view on that is we should be, I, the wording is a little bit weird for me because what we've talked about is how can we do more and better traffic enforcement? Perhaps using technology, perhaps using third-party resources? That really is what I thought the task is. How do we do more?
And that's a great focus of mine, but in doing that, I didn't want to eliminate things that were being done previously that were put in place prior to my arrival to in any way devalue them, carried all of those over, while continuing to look to do exactly what you just highlighted, to try to find some new ways through technology and any other means we can to expand on what we're doing moving forward.
So can we just change the wording of that and make it clear that this is, this is new things that we want to consider?
Yes.
To improve our traffic enforcement?
Correct.
Because I think that's probably something we all agree that is very important to the community and to us.
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, we'll make that.
Okay, then the next is bus shelters. I mean, personally, I think we're working on it, we continue to work on it.
Correct.
And if there's money from Metro, that's great, but it's still going to require some work on our part to identify the locations and, you know.
Well, that's what Metro was going to do, was identi, because it's Metro's data. Metro was going to come in and say, these are your most used bus stops. And these are the type of structures you can put in, and this is the funding possibilities. So a lot of that burden was going to be taken by Metro. So I don't want, so the point is, I don't want Yazdan's staff to be, to be duplicating that effort. I mean, this is why I'm raising these.
Truly appreciate that sentiment, Councilmember Najarian. So my suggestion would be much like Rock Haven. Let's put this on pause until we hear back from Metro and their strategy.
Okay.
So we'll have a, we'll have a, we have a section that's items that are on pause. So it'll be Rock Haven and bus shade structures for the time being.
Okay, but we won't forget about it because if Metro.
No, we will not forget.
Well, you'll make sure Metro comes through, but just in case they don't come through, we want to come back to it, right?
Put a tickler on it, that we turn and look.
Bus ridership, yeah, maybe you could explain what that, what gave rise to that.
Mr. Ronnie? Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of city council. That's one of the, once the pandemic hit, our bus ridership dropped off substantially. So we are making some additional enhancements into our, whether it's our audiovisual equipment that we're installing. We're trying to improve our fare boxes. And basically, making efforts, advertising, you know, outreach, doing what we can to bring the levels of bus ridership back to pre-pandemic levels. So we've started it. You could look at it as this is something that's ongoing. But we are focusing on it and dedicating some specific staff time to bring it back to the level that it was before.
Okay, so can we call it something like strategies to recover ridership level?
Can I, can I add a comment to that?
Yeah, please.
Because I have something in my notes for that. I think it's, when we're thinking about increasing bus ridership, one of the things I want to see is reevaluating our existing routes. This is something we've talked about, reducing the wait times. You know, just, what was it, last week I met with Associated Student Governing Body of GCC. They were talking about how they can't seem to take the bus because the wait times are too long and the routes are too, too few and far in between. And so as we're kind of going through this process for us, I recognize that the senior citizens also have that issue. So I, you know, as, I don't want it to just be that, you know, let's figure out how we get to the place we were before COVID. But what are some things that we can do to reduce wait times? Some of our B-lines I see, you know, we've also talked about this. You know, they're riding up and down empty. You know, as we're moving to, like, switch over to maybe an electric vehicle to look, maybe we're reducing the size. So it's not a giant bus that's going up and down and creating traffic, but it's a smaller size but has more routes. So I think within this increased bus ridership is also looking at all these different opportunities that are available that increase that ridership.
So if I may suggest then, based, based on your comments, that we'll revise the language to say evaluate existing routes for improving, improving, not necessarily, increasing ridership and into.
I'm. Did you do that two years ago?
Well, we should do it because, no, it wasn't two years ago, pre-COVID.
Done December of 2019.
It's been a minute.
So things have changed. It's time, yeah, to evaluate our existing routes, our existing ridership, different size buses perhaps. And there are vehicles out there and essentially newer strategies that are available out there that we can utilize.
And definitely the, the wait times.
And the wait times.
Is something that I keep hearing over and over again that.
That will be part of the evaluation. We'll conduct the study.
Okay, high visibility and creative crosswalks. That you have on here because that's just an ongoing.
That's a continuation from last work plan.
Okay, and we're certainly not done, so that's why it's on there. So I would like to keep it on there. Consensus? Identify parking lots for resurfacing.
I'm sorry, which was the one that you were asking for consensus on, Mr. Mayor?
11, high visibility and creative crosswalks.
And the desire is to what?
To just keep it on there because it's still a work in progress. Continuing to work on that. I mean, we're not done. We have lots of crosswalks that are not high visibility that should be, so.
I guess my, my, my question is, we're deciding to take certain things off that haven't been completed yet. And I, I haven't jumped in, I don't want to interrupt any of my colleagues, but we talked about bus shelters. I drive around the city and I see a lot of places that don't have bus shelters. And I appreciate that Metro is working on it. I think Councilmember Najarian has done a tremendous job in making sure that resources are brought to the city and funneled here. But some of these things are things that I've just, you know, waited to see happen in the city for, for years that impact some of the most, you know, vulnerable members of our community. And I think to say, okay, we're going to take that off, but we're going to leave crosswalks on here. I'm fine with leaving crosswalks on here, but I think bus shelters are as important to leave here. And if that means that leaving it on here just means that someone from staff constantly checks in with Metro to make sure that they're, you know, we're moving forward with their work plan and that, you know, large organization, so be it, but anyways.
And I, I agree with that. I think that makes complete sense. I mean, putting, it's a little bit artificial saying we're putting it aside. It's still part of the, the plan, so I'm, you know. Parking lots is something we're still working on, identifying parking lots. The, now, now we're on page two of four, so we're on 12, which is the Police Accountability Bureau. We already talked about that. The Aquius ozone technology, I mean.
What is that?
Mr. Bulanikian.
I hope it's environmentally friendly.
Good evening, Mayor Brotman, members of the council. Yes, it is environmentally friendly. Basically, they use, the machines use electricity, water. They break up the water into molecules and create ozone. It's a deodorizer and basically keeps the restroom spotless. It'll save about 45 minutes per day for our employees to clean the facility. They go in and out. We can't purchase the equipment. They're available for a lease. So we're hoping to install 31 units, 31 of our bathrooms. It'll cost us about $120,000 a year.
And, and to your point, Councilmember Najarian, that's the, the whole intent of this evening's presentation, for council to say, do it. Otherwise, if we came, Mr. Bulanikian, at a later time with a report, I'm not saying this council would, but.
Reports, Rubik.
No, we have to, we have to enter into a lease agreement.
Is it cost-effective on it?
It will be cost-effective. Yeah, it'll save staff time.
The simple green and the other cleaning products.
Those, that stuff doesn't work, I'll be honest.
And this is non-toxic.
It's non-toxic and our bathrooms are smelling pretty well.
Yeah, just do it.
And we'll save money.
We'll save money, yes. Well, no, we're going to be spending money. We're going to be saving staff time and we reallocate those resources to actual horticulture maintenance and maintenance maintaining.
Operational efficiency.
It'll pay for itself with, with staff time savings.
Yes.
That'll be redeployed. Okay, okay. Where are we now? We're, we're almost, we're almost there. The next one is the fleet electrification, which we talked about. That's still a long, that's a long-term project. That's going to take a lot of, a lot of continued work. So that's everything.
Well, there was this communication to the library.
Oh, but that's, we just agreed to the contract, but the work still has to happen.
This is, no, this is communication for safety reasons.
Oh, yes.
And I, and if I may, Mayor.
Sure, please.
I just think it's really important to have a good communication in the libraries with all that's going on in our world today. I think this is absolutely necessary, so I, I'm in favor of leaving this on the list.
I'm okay with it.
And do it.
Okay, all right, so you got a couple off. Okay.
Thank you, Councilmember Najarian.
Now, let's go through, I mean, I have comments, but I'll, I'll wait until.
I have my list. Do you want me to?
Okay, so let's go through your list.
Which list is this?
So.
Comments.
Yeah, just comments. So on economic, under economic development, under number one, the city-owned parking lots. Could we add, Mr. Calvert, green spaces and public-private partnerships to that? So one of the things I'm also thinking about, Mr. Mayor, is the playgrounds I was talking to you about that would, we would, that would serve as, like, for example, childcare services and so forth. So for us to also look at different avenues for us to be able to use those city parking lots. Would that be okay if we added it there?
Mayor Brotman, members of city council. When we say development opportunities, really that should just say highest and best use. So it could include other opportunities such as green space or anything else.
Or a combination thereof.
Exactly.
So could we, could we do green spaces and public-private partnerships, possibly?
We can modify that statement, correct, yes.
Okay.
No comments from him. If anybody else has comments, I'm, I'm going to, if, if we don't hear anything. No, no, if we don't hear any objections, I'm going to assume there's consensus. Can we do that?
Okay. Number six, under improve operations and efficiency. This complete independent third-party evaluation of existing zones. Does that also include the, looking at our DRB and historic preservation processes? Does that include, like, minor changes to nonhistoric homes that are in historic districts? Like, things that we had talked about previously? Or is that just on certain zone changes or development?
No, this would be looking at our entire development and entitlement process, codes, interactions, processes with DRBs, HPC, planning commissions. This would be a very comprehensive analysis. It would include all of the elements that you just listed, plus many more.
That, all of that is included in?
Correct.
Okay. On number, is it? There was a strategic plan. I can't find it. Oh, here we go, number 22. This is something we also talked about during the workshop plan. I'd like to see a strategic plan or long-term strategic plan from all departments. This is something we had talked about with our police chief and fire chief and with the department heads. Are cities ever-changing? And in order for us to make sure that we have the proper tools in each of those departments, we really need to look at a five-to-10-year forecast of what we're. what we're expecting so we can plan ahead and that we're not just making decisions, you know, annually on these things. And so if it would be okay with everyone, instead of just human resources, I would like for that to be something that all departments work on. And then maybe kind of bring together for the departments to work together to see.
Yes, Mayor Brotman, members of City Council, Councilmember Sartian, that is my intention. That's one of my goals and objectives. We started on a strategic plan citywide, and then the pandemic hit, and then we had the election. So, and new council members, that's why we put it on hold. Again, that's, that's one of my directives to the department heads, and collectively we'll restart that process. You don't have to add it here, but rest assured that that's something on top of my, my list of things to do in the next year or so. And this strategic plan for human resources is, although it's specific to human resources, dealing with recruitments and other means that of their operations, the one that I'm and you're referring to, it'll cover citywide. And departments will take that overarching plan and then generate goals and objectives for their own departments.
Okay, so.
We can, if you like, to use general terms.
Just terms like that we would have.
Citywide, yeah, that's fine. That's fine.
So under that strategic plan, again, for the human resources, would the civil service rules and changes for hiring evaluations, all of that, would that be part of that?
Ms. Adams, if you would, please.
Good evening, good evening, Mayor Brotman and members of the City Council. Looking at the entire civil service rules will be a part of that. Some of the civil service rules are tied to the city charter, which means it will take a vote outside of the commission in order to make those changes. Other rules that the commission can review, we will be looking at those first. So how much of the strategy will be accomplished in year one versus year five, we'll have to see.
Okay.
Thank you.
The, and then number 14, under improve operations, says implement online reservation system for recreational programs. This is something, yes. Does this also include reservation for our parks?
This is everything across the board. It'll be all of our reservations, facade reservations, field reservations. It's a matter of working with the rec track. We have that service available. They'll just turn it on. We'll work with our IST folks to implement it. So it should be done within the next few months.
Awesome. Thank you. Okay.
Smile on your face.
Oh, I've been asking for that since I was on the Parks Commission.
We were waiting for the adopted work plan.
Right. I think that's all I got, you know?
Okay.
Thanks.
Okay. Councilor Kusakian, do you want to run through any, anything that you think is missing, anything that you think needs to be worded?
I don't know. I think that, you know, some of these things, I go back to the original list of staff's work items that have been directed by council. And obviously, the first thing I did, and I'm sure you all did too, is you look at what you have specifically requested to see if it was completed or not. I look at one that is the City Hall in Your Neighborhood project, right? The initiative that I was hoping to start, and it says completed. And.
Can I just, sorry, just get you to pause for a second. I think what we want to do is we want to go through the work plan.
Sure.
And then let's go to that list of council, like those added items, right? Isn't that, Mr. Galanian, what you want to do?
Yes, my, to Mayor, that's next.
To keep it clean, otherwise it's really.
Sure. I understand. Look, I'm fine with, again, with what staff has proposed, adding things, taking things. I mean, I could say that, you know, we do need to look at our websites and how our communication is done across departments, where every department has now its own social media account, and doing an assessment of whether it's even worthwhile for some of them to have that. Public records and where we are in terms of digitizing records so they're publicly accessible across departments. Those are all things that I think lend themselves to improving operations and efficiency in city government. But I'm hesitant to add more to the list that's already here. I'm fine. I'm okay with this. But then I'm also questioning why certain things, you know, if it's deemed completed, does that mean we're not going to do it? And example I was going to bring up, Mr. Mayor, is when, when I initially asked for us to resume the City Hall in Your Neighborhood program was to basically take some of the issues that we discussed, go out to the neighborhoods, talk to our residents, and hear from them as to what are their concerns. We're sitting here in a council chamber with just a handful of members of the public deciding what the needs of the community are, which is, I appreciate, you know, the staff's work, but it's a very top-down approach. And I don't know, the reason why we add things to this list is because people come up to us in various places in the community and ask us to look into things that we may not be aware of, that staff may not be aware of. Yet according to this, like something like the City Hall in Your Neighborhood is completed. And I don't know if that means we're ever going to do it again, if it was done just to appease a council member who requested it, and we're not going to come back to it. I don't know. I would like an answer from staff as to where they.
Yes, we will come back and we will answer those questions. Do you want to say something about council in your neighborhood?
Absolutely. Yes, Councilmember Kusakian, you are correct. You had initiated and requested this. And as you know, we managed to have one. Mayor Brotman and I have had conversation about it. We are planning to have a second one sometime after the adoption of the budget. It'll be probably in July, somewhere in South Glendale that we haven't yet identified a location. And then another one in the fall, it'll be in North Glendale. But the plan that you had initiated is in the works. It's continuing. The reason it says complete is because we addressed the request. But we haven't stopped it. It will be, and your request was to continue it. And that's why we say it's complete, because it's on a path and it's going to be continued.
And we are talking about three for next fiscal year, aren't we?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay. So, yeah, okay. But, but on the, the other efficiency items that you mentioned, digitizing some of the records in the clerk's office, is that something?
I think the, I mean, we need to look at having records, requests that the public is, having a way to assess what records are the ones that are most requested, looking at ways of making those accessible to the public without having to go through necessarily the public records request policies, finding out, you know, what the status of our records are. I know that we adopted a records policy while I believe at that time the city clerk Ajemian was in, in office or holding the position. But I don't know what's being done subsequently. And the reason I bring that up is not specifically about records, but, you know, I can tell you that oftentimes, and I know that my colleagues do this as well, we become like a 411 operator when the public asks us. I just had someone ask me a question about trimming of trees that where the limbs reach over the property line into the next property. And, you know, I went directly to Mr. Imran, who gave me a response. But, you know, those are things that the public should be able to access easily, right? And know what are the things that are being requested and being able to provide that. Have a more end user in mind outwardly facing city communications and information portals. So those are my, that's one of the things that I, I hope will be incorporated in this, but I don't want to add that as yet. One more thing for the city to say, well, we're going to have this as an item, and it's going to take a sex amount of resources to do. Anyways.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Kusakian, I appreciate those comments and your concern about adding to this list and the use of resources. But those are great points, and that's, I'm a huge advocate of that. And as part of what we decided to add or expand on the communication plan, we'll incorporate those concerns and issues and come up with ideas for council's consideration once we bring that community, communication plan forward.
I mean, the last thing I'll say about this whole process, it feels as though we're zooming out, zooming in, zooming out, zooming in. There's issues that are big across the organization issues, and then we're getting into the minutia of what kind of cleaning supplies we're going to use for park restrooms, and then zooming out again to talk about how we're communicating. And that's the part that, that is somewhat confusing to me. On the other hand, there are some items on here on this list, which, you know, as the chief mentioned, are essential to do because it requires us properly complying with state, you know, laws and guidelines. So, I mean, it would be interesting to know how many of these items are those essential things that we have no, I guess, room to wiggle on and we have to seriously implement. And the last thing I'll say is I'm hoping that staff, and I'm certain that staff has looked at how we're going to be able to implement these all within the upcoming budget discussions and what we're going to be facing in terms of our desires to do all this and the resources to do it with.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so I have, did we, did we go through yours?
I did one, and I have, I have one, one more that I, and this one goes to Mr. Calvert. Number seven, the restructuring of neighborhood services and general approach to resolving cases that is more proactive and customer-oriented. And I just want to make sure that included in that discussion or in that process that you look at increasing the punitive damages on illegal construction. We talked about that. And, and you're going to try to speed up code, the case procedures and the code enforcement process. Is that correct?
Councilmember Devine, the former is a broader discussion that we would need to bring back to council. The latter will be a consequence of our fully staffing, which we are in the process of doing now, and that restructuring. That will make them more efficient. That will allow us to be able to address codes, or, excuse me, enforcement issues at a faster pace. Lastly, what I'll add to that is that the comment about the proactive is the ability to be able to go out in the community more frequently rather than just responding, but being, being more proactive in our enforcement.
And what about?
Sorry. My apologies. I was trying to get your attention. Councilmember Devine, you are correct. That was one of your asks, and it's on the follow-up list that we'll cover next. And if we get direction to move forward with it, we get consensus, then Mr. Calvert and staff will provide a staff, a report that will address those requests.
Okay. All right. Thank you. That's it.
Okay. Yes, I'm going to just go through some of my points, and then we'll take the public comment that we have. So the only comment on the ones here is items not fitting into the above priority, number two, where it talks about public outreach, conduct public outreach and implement organics diversion and compliance requirements. And I would just like to ask if everybody is okay that we just described it a little bit more broadly to include food waste, because we have talked about, you know, doing some kind of campaign to not just get people to sort things properly, but also reduce food waste. And I think that's part of SB 1383. So I would like, I would like that. Is there?
That was on my list.
That was on your list. Okay, is there any objection to that? Okay.
Mayor Brotman, so I don't have an objection to that. But would this, I just have a question. Would this be something that would be incorporated into that kind of communications plan I'm talking about, where we're also talking about all these ordinances and stuff that we have, or things that we're trying to push forth, or that this council finds as priority that we're going to, you know, as we're going through the budget session also, for us to figure out, you know, where we're investing our dollars. So for example, if, you know, if it's recycling and waste reduction to our electrification, to our, you know, conserving water and, and the resources that GWP has, but no one knows about, you know, so.
Yes, we, Councilmember Sartian, we most certainly can. And it will have a cost impact, obviously, but I'll, Mr. Imran is raising his hand to say something.
Thank you, Mr. Galanian. Councilmember Sartian, this is, this specifically, this item was a separate item that's part of our, not only for our commercial franchising, but also for our residential. So this is a separate contract that we have actually with a public relations firm to actually perform these outreach, outreach activities and make sure that our residents are aware of all the organics diversion. And as Mayor Brotman mentioned, in terms of the food waste, you know, we do the education and updating of them to the terms and requirements of SB 1383.
So I believe, though, I'm sorry, I believe Councilmember Sartian was asking about additional new outreach as Mr., as Mayor Brotman mentioned regarding food waste reduction.
Yes, and that, this also includes that, which we, we can modify the title, but that's also part and parcel of the outreach that we're going to be conducting through this public, public relations firm.
How long have you been conducting this, or is this something new?
This is fairly new. This, we started, we selected the consultant last year, and as the, we implemented the, the requirements of SB 1383, basically, they're going to basically come on board. They've conducted about three or four public outreach campaigns right now. But again, as, as we're implementing the regulations and we're, for example, on the organics part, we're signing up more and more on the commercial side, we're increasing the outreach. So there is a plan that's in place to make sure that the, the, the elements of SB 1383 are communicated. We do outreach, we do public education campaigns. So that's all part and parcel of this effort.
Okay, I just, you know, all I'll say on that is I live, I recognize I live in a multifamily, so I don't know if this is part of that. But to date, not a single one of us has received anything about recycling, organics. You know, I've committed this as well. My building is built in such a way, it's trash shoots. I don't think my neighbors even know that the trash cans have changed under, on the, on the bottom. Our HOA has not communicated anything. So again, this brings me back to proper public education and outreach and us not wasting our money to firms that are just doing cookie cutter approaches. So I'll just, I mean, that needs to remain on that. But I would love for us to include the waste reduction. I would love for us to actually get some reports back on this because I don't know how it's working out.
Absolutely. And this campaign is definitely going to kick up more and increase as, you know, we're implementing the elements of SB 1383.
I think Councilmember Sartian raises, you know, and has raised again and again, an important point about how we do public communications and, and marketing for policies and programs that we have. And, and I think, I agree, I think we probably all agree that we still are kind of in the dark ages in terms of how we do things. We just kind of shoot stuff across the transom and, and hope somebody reads it. So I think we all are hearing from you again and again, and it's, and I think it's an important message that we, we need to get into the modern age. We need to figure out how to do this stuff a lot better. And so I'm with you on that, whether it comes to this or it comes to what we want to do on plastics or probably 10 other things that we want to, we want to do. How can we do a better job with our social media, with our, you know, I don't know, whatever.
Agreed.
Yeah. Okay. Okay. So I just want to acknowledge that that's something that you've, you've brought to us and, and, you know, we're hearing it. I am. And I agree. So I just have this kind of, let's see, you know, partly goes back to the fact that we are not including sustainability as one of our priorities. But we do have a lot of things in the pipeline that we are either working on or have been requested. And, and I just want to, you know, my hope is that those things don't fall off because this year we've decided that that's not one of our priorities. So I want to mention a few things. One of them is we've talked about bringing back a report on building electrification for major remodels. I know we have to define what a major remodel is, but I do hope, you know, that's still on the, on the path to coming back to us so we can have that discussion.
Well, we have a problem with that due to the.
Well, we have a problem with that due to the court decision that a city cannot force electrification.
No, we don't, no we don't. That court decision, well, maybe, that court decision was a different type of structure than what we've implemented.
Let's just put it that way.
Yeah, but that doesn't involve reach codes.
I don't know about that. We're looking at it, so.
Right, I don't think it does. But anyway.
Oh, he's the attorney.
Yeah.
But we should, so before we go anywhere on that, we should get some direction, just so there's not wasted effort or duplicative effort.
No, no question, yeah.
Actually, I apologize.
I mean, I voted for it, but this lawsuit kind of.
Right, Mayor Brotman, member city council, that is on the active list of council requests that we'll cover next.
Okay. The next one is the virtual power plant. I know we struck out last time. I think Councilmember Devine brought up, you know, is there a way we can, we do it differently? And we now know that other places have done them successfully, like Sacramento Municipal Utility District, and their other operators that are doing them in a simpler way. So, I don't, I think that's still something we need to meet our other goals, and I want to make sure it's in the pipeline.
Mr. Mayor, that's also on the council follow-up request.
Okay, maybe this one is too, sorry. Repair Cafe.
That's, that's in the works.
And that's in the works, I know. I just, just don't want it to be forgotten, I mean.
Mr. Jones will not forget that.
Okay. We also talked about an e-bike test drive, rolling that into.
It's also on the list.
Okay. Shared mobility pilot?
That's not on the list, and that's something that we need direction from council on.
Okay, so, on that one, I would just say, remember, we had the RFP, we canceled the RFP. We did say that at some point, we wanted to come back and relook at that. I think there was some anxiety about scooters. I would really like, you know, we could take scooters off, but I would like us to look at something with e-bikes and perhaps with non-e-bikes. Is that something that we can, that staff can handle in the current course of, with current resources? Can we add that?
Hi, Mr. Mayor, I would highly recommend we go over the follow-up list.
Okay, because that's on there.
Well, I'm not sure if it's on there, to be honest. There's so many on there.
Okay.
But we're gonna cover it line, line item by line item.
Okay, but I'm not sure these are on there.
And if it's not, as you may recall, we have a new process in place for adding new items that get agendized for discussion.
Okay, let me just check two more. One of them is Project Home Key.
That's also not on the council. It's a new, new request that needs to be agendized for discussion.
Okay. And for my colleagues, you know, I think we've talked about this, there's a large sum of money, something like $700 million in that third round from Sacramento.
There's funding availability, there's a pretty competitive process.
Pretty competitive process, and big implications, even if we do get the money to then, you know, run this. So, I know it's a big question. And then, I think that's, oh, and the last one was, I don't even know what to call it. I spoke to Councilmember Jarian about this. This is kind of a mobility option, like a kind of mini Metro Micro. It's like a Metro Micro Micro, which is run by third-party companies. One of the, one of the companies, not the only one of the companies, is called Circuit, and I've introduced Mr. Calvert to that solution that's being used in a lot of cities, including Long Beach and some of the other beach cities. I actually happened to be in Anaheim over the weekend, and I came across a similar service called Fran, which is something, I forget what it stands for. But it's, it's, I actually have a 30-second video. Can I just show the 30 seconds? It's 30 seconds, literally, it's 30 seconds.
You're multimedia mayor. That's okay, I like that.
30 seconds, okay. Because I just think this is so cool, and I want to get you excited about it.
All right.
Okay. That was it. But basically, I kind of saw what Circuit's doing at Long Beach and this as a very, very cheap way of achieving what we were hoping to achieve with our trolley, which is to get people from the train station up through Fran. And I know Mr. Calvert is already starting to talk to the Downtown Glendale Association, because clearly it would be of great benefit to them. There may be some money available, there's some advertising revenue. So, anyway, I just want this, I'm hoping I can get my colleague's support to include this.
As part of the work plan?
Why not?
Can it, can't that just be added to the number nine for like the increased bus ridership that we changed? Because that would be part of like a new program that they can evaluate?
Yeah, but it's not our, it's like not our bus system. It would be kind of.
Someone else does it. It's someone else that provides it.
Would you have to pay for it?
Yeah, it's a third party that does it. We would, we would either subsidize it, or it would get covered with like the Downtown Glendale Association and advertisement and maybe some funding, maybe Metro might kick in something. It's.
Metro's already cheaping out on the B-line, and the B-line's in trouble, perhaps. I mean, I don't have a problem discussing it. I mean.
That's all I'm talking about, evaluating.
Is this a new proposal?
That is a new proposal.
Look what I did. I said I didn't want to add anything more, and I'm.
He took all that stuff off.
Yeah, yeah, can I just get it in there? One of the ones he took off?
And then we consolidated some things.
Like Mr. Mayor mentioned, Mr. Calvert's already started the conversation with an outfit, not necessarily Fran. And he's working closely, at least he's trying to work with Downtown Glendale Association for some strategies so that it won't cost the city any money. There are grants out there available, they have matching requirements, but we can certainly, he can continue doing that if that's council direction, and we'll bring a report back.
Just do it. You got me at an off moment.
Okay, good, good. Okay.
Yeah, I have just one thing. Number one, initiate creation of a department, of a Department of Transportation. Is that actually initiating, or that's like us getting a report on what that would look like, and like the different opportunities we have before we create a department?
Councilmember Sajjan, that's been a council direction to me, to create that department.
But you're not gonna just go do it. It would definitely come to us.
It will come to you before the final step.
What is that? Can you walk me through that?
Well, there's research involved that we have already initiated. There's going to be conversation with our Public Works Department and Community Development Department that are directly involved in the functions of what typically a transportation, separate Department of Transportation would do. So, it'll be a report as to the pros and cons and the impacts that it has, it's going to have on the city's operation, and if we need to add additional staff members.
I think the only thing I would like to add to that is for that report to also include potential like different models for this, that maybe it's not a department, or maybe it's a sub-department, or it's how the departments work together, whatever you guys see fit. But understanding that transportation's important and how we make it work. I recognize that the current system doesn't work well because of the structure, but, you know, it could be that you guys come back and say, you know, maybe we don't need a whole department, but what we need is for these bodies to be speaking with each other, or there needs to be a sub-department under this, and this is how we would structure it.
Yes, we can, we can definitely offer up options.
Okay. All right. So, Mr. Galanian, we got through the work plan.
So.
Now, did you want to go through the council requests?
I would, before, before doing that, make sure.
Take public comment.
Mr. Garcia, can we adopt a motion separately for the adoption of this work plan before we start the?
Good, but I know we have speakers on before you do that.
Yeah, yeah, we'll do the, okay. So, do we have just the one, just Mr. Milano? Okay, Mr. Milano, thank you for waiting.
Mayor Brotman, members of the city council, as I sat here listening to some of the items that were, that you're considering, I understand fully well that your position as council members, listening to the general public, and your own ideas that you see elsewhere, are now in your to-do list of things that you, or your wish list of things that you want to accomplish. But every single thing on this list, every single one of them fall under one category, strategic plan. And the best-run cities in the United States, Austin, Charlotte, North Carolina, Seattle, Washington, have been doing this for years. So, I understand you, in your background, and in your professional background, you may not have been exposed to what strategic plan really means. But I see it with some level of hope that finally it may actually take hold. The specific strategic plan that I'm recommending that you look up on the web, spend seven minutes on it, is called the Balance Core Card. And look up the cities, Austin, Charlotte, North Carolina, Seattle, there's a few others, only a handful. But all of these items fall under some category that allows you to then set priorities. I see a listing fixing up mixing alfresco violations and then emergency preparedness, something that is small, something that is hugely important for the city. I see items that have to do with improving bus shelters, high visibility crosswalks, and you have driver's education, all of them under the category and umbrella of safety. And they all can be categorized, annotated, defined as to how important they are, how soon they need to be done. My suggestion, and my really strong suggestion, is that you do a three-day retreat under the guidance of an expert in strategic planning. I'm not offering my services on this, but that was the solution that we had to implement with a lot of companies, international companies, where we had tried to establish systems that are global to these companies. And so, I'm just begging you, you have, you're at the threshold of an opportunity to change the way you do business, change the way you actually run your weekly meetings, find ideas as to how to structure every single month, so that they're all geared towards the same objective. This way, when someone comes to you on the street, you know, it's, council member, what have you done with respect to this, and we talked about it, you can say, yeah, it is being considered, and it is here on the strategic plan, and it won't be done this year, but it is there under this category, and it's all written down. But it gives guidance to every single department, it gives guidance to every director, they know where you're going, and it gives you clarity. Please, implement the strategic plan, make that your priority, and do a three-day retreat. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Would you like to move on to the next item?
Yes.
Can I, just a couple of comments. One is, you could move it, however, just keep in mind you're gonna talk about the work plan, which you may move stuff on there and all that. So, you may want to think about having the discussion on the, on the follow-up list, and then move them together. The other thing, I did want to speak a little bit to Rockhaven, without obviously getting too much into the litigation. But I don't see a, I don't see a disconnect or a conflict with having it on the work plan and with the litigation. In fact, you know, just noting, it's, this is poke record, that the allegation is that the city's not doing enough, essentially. So, having it on the work plan, I don't think there's any conflict with that. So, that's just my thought. I wanted to provide that information to you. If you want, you can amend it to say, you know, to say complete design implementation of the improvements of the Rockhaven site, Rockhaven site in accordance with legal process. That way, we're following the process that we need to follow, but it's still on the, it's still on the work plan.
Okay, I think that's sensible. You good with that?
Okay.
I guess. Okay, so.
All right, next.
Can I give that to you to?
Yes, I have.
And through what you want us to do.
Right. So, next is the infamous council follow-up list that we started tracking back in 2018. To date, staff have completed 195 items. I repeat, 195 items. To council member Kasakian's note, in my opinion, I may be a little biased, but I do believe that staff done a phenomenal job of addressing all these items that, again, are above and beyond their routine operational necessities and critical services that they provide to, to our community, to our residents and businesses. So, all in all, there were 231. Again, 195 items have been completed. This was a way to keep track of these requests that, as you know, were raised during various city council meetings. And as the old process went, an item was added to this follow-up list when one council member requested it and got a second, and then it got on the list. Again, kudos to the staff members that have been able to complete all these items, and they've been very diligent, trying to address your requests as best as they can, and trying to fit them in within their workload. But the system has been challenging, and, and the numbers of the requests have been going up, and it's reached a point that it's not sustainable any longer. And quite honestly, we haven't had a formal process in place to set priorities for this request. So, it's my hope and desire that we, council directs us to fold this, go over the, Ms. Bolbolyon is going to go over the items, and then we need direction from council, whether there's consensus on moving forward, if any of these items are still, still, in council's opinion, a priority, it's a valid request, or it has relevancy, or not, then in which case we can delete it. But at the end of the day, I'd like to see combining these two lists into one, and we'll have one, one work plan to work off of. So, next. On the council follow-up list, there was a request by council member Sajjan to categorize what these requests, which priority area they fall into. Currently, there's a mistake here, our error, there are 22 active items. Six of them fall within environmental, previously adopted priority of environmental stewardship. 13 have already been completed, for a total of 19. And housing priority area, three are still active, six been completed, nine in total. Infrastructure, one still active, one has been completed, for a total of two. Mobility, connectivity, safety, two are still active, five been completed, for a total of seven. No specific category, 10 are still active, 24 have been completed, for a total of 30. So, between January, staff went back to January 2020 until a couple of months ago. There's 70 items, 49 have been completed. We have 71 items, I apologize, 49 completed. There's still 22 active items that Ms. Bolbolyon is going to walk you through.
Okay. So, the first item is a report to determine what it would take for Glendale to reach 100% clean energy by 2035. This item was requested on March 30th, 2021, by council member Brotman, seconded by council member Kasakian. And this last column just indicates where staff has already initiated working on these items. So, my goal is to go through the 22 items in this format and just get general consensus from council. And this should be exhibit two that you should be looking at. And if you have two, that's because we fixed the error that Mr. Galanian referred to. So, it should be labeled exhibit two revised.
Okay, so, you know where we are?
Yeah, we're on page seven of this PowerPoint presentation, and we're going through it. It's this page, it's just they're gonna.
Oh, it is.
Because of the animation, your version looks different than this version. You have the complete list, yeah. The order should be the same, it's just this is animated, and yours is a hard copy, which does not have the animation.
Okay, so, why don't we each comment if it's our request?
That's item four.
That's item four. So on exhibit two, this is item four that's on this.
Yeah, it might be easier to just go through this because I already pulled out all of the active items. So you don't have to refer to that list.
Okay.
Yeah.
I would just.
Just that one, yes.
What's that?
I'll go through your item.
Okay, if anything is with, I would say this one we're already doing, right? Isn't this what we have Ascend doing? So I think we can take this off. No, am I mistaken?
So so I think what we wanted out of this was if this is still a priority to council, they'll basically fold it into the work plan. Our goal is to not have these two parallel lists. We want to merge them into one comprehensive list so that staff can follow. So again, out of these 22 items, our goal is to get a yea or a nay. If it's a yea, we want it incorporated into the work plan. If it's a no, then it gets dropped off completely and council can always revisit it at a future time.
Okay, but we've already said yes to this.
Mister Mayor, to your to your point, yes, this is already in the works. The the council adopted a resolution, obviously. And Mister Young and his staff are working on it.
So we don't need it on this list, right?
No, we don't need it. We'll just take it off.
But it's not.
Does it need to be on the work plan? I mean, the IRP is.
No, it's part of the, yeah, exactly, part of the IRP, future IRP. We'll we'll take it off, that's fine. Next.
Options for improving bus shelter covered at existing bus bus stops. So this is what Mr. Galani was saying when some of the comments came up during the previous exercise. So this is already on the work plan. So I'll just move on.
Okay, and this one is staying on the work plan?
It's staying on the work plan and there is an item on the work plan that could cover this.
Okay.
Next one is a memo regarding the purpose and merits of potentially adopting a dark sky ordinance to address light pollution. So this was July 2021, council member Brotman and council member Devine. And staff has not initiated any any action on this, on this item, just to do other priorities.
Yeah, and I would like to request that this be put into our action plan. I I've gotten complaints about light pollution. I think if you look up into the hills, you'll see that there are lights. I have gotten complaints from neighbors who have other neighbors that are residents that have neighbors that have bright lights shining right into their residence. And so I think we should look into this, this dark skies.
What ordinance, what is that?
I think that's different, you might be, I I think that's a different issue. A neighbor with, let's say, a bright spotlight is different than a citywide dark sky ordinance where.
Well, it would be, you know, I guess measuring the intensity of the lights. That would be, is that what dark skies?
If I could, because I I requested it, I mean, there are many different kinds of dark sky ordinances. I looked at some typical ones and they'll cover a range of things, so we can keep it open. I think that what what started for me was some people saying that neighbors were putting very bright like lights, like these, what do you call those with like a cup?
Fluorescent lights.
Candle, what do you call that?
Can lights, Mayor Brotman.
Candle lights.
Canned, canned.
Can lights, can lights around the house.
Yes.
And our DRB process didn't have, we we didn't have any kind of way of of controlling that. So the idea was, let's talk about how we handle brightness.
Yeah.
In general.
I'm not in favor of that.
And I have.
With all due respect, I think we've got a lot more sustainability and many more important things that you've raised that I I think would should come before this. In the perfect world?
Yeah.
Yeah, let's cut the lights down, but we've got so much, we've got so much to do.
Well, this is just to ask for.
Report.
Staff to look, look at this. I I actually had this problem at my house. The neighbor put in the lights all the way around his deck and they were shining right on our house at night and they were on all night. Okay, fortunately, I had a neighbor that when we called him over and said, look at what's happening here. He said, I will change the direction of those lights. Others don't have that, that kind of a neighbor. So I I really think it's a quality of life issue and I think we should, we should look into it. And as I said, look at, look at the hillside and all the lights that are up there and they're on all night long. And if you're a neighbor and those lights are on the palm trees going up 60 feet all night long, it becomes a quality of life issue.
I would, okay, I would just say it's, if I had to compare, if I had to rank it with the other things that I've indicated I want, it would be lower on my list.
Right.
So if it doesn't make it on this year's work plan, if we could endeavor to try to raise it, to put it on next year.
You can certainly do that.
I I I do understand that it's not the highest priority. It's it is a, it is a, something it would be nice to have, but it is not the highest priority. Councilmember Satrian.
I think that, you know, we were just talking about cleaning up our codes and streamlining our processes to make it easier. And the reason that we have such a heavy process to begin with is because that year after year, little things got added on that just make things difficult for people. I recognize that that may, you know, something that's right for one person might not be so much for the other. Of all the things that we have to deal with and and what we're looking at staff, I don't.
Okay, we'll push it.
Thank you. And staff, thanks you.
Okay, moving along. Consideration of incentive program to allow short-term rentals and apartments where the landlord participates in the Section 8 program. This review is intended to include information regarding whether Section 8 applicants are having trouble finding suitable units in the market. This goes back to February 2022 with council member Kasakian and Brotman. And staff has not initiated work on this item.
I'm fine with this being taken off at at the moment. I I want to just say that I think again, at various times, we've heard from residents who receive Section 8 vouchers are trying to find units. There was more, a more constrained housing market in the past. There may still be, I'm not sure, but I'll, you know, I'm sure staff will can help provide that information as we move forward with the regular housing reports. So I'm I'm fine with having this taken off.
Mayor, and I have a comment. This afternoon at housing, okay, that was one of my questions to our housing department, do we have enough units? And the answer was yes. So this, I agree, this should be taken off.
Okay, thank you. Next item, consideration to implement local hire component throughout development projects with within the city's jurisdiction. Goes back to February 2022, council member Devine and Kasakian. And again, staff has not initiated work on this item.
I love this, I think we should.
I mean, I would still like to have this initiative studied and brought back because I believe it's a job creation suggestion and idea. And I would urge staff and legal to look into it.
Yeah, I think there are some legal constraints without specific state legislation. Are you familiar with that, Mike? I mean, you you can't say just hire from within without some legislation. I know when Metro tried to do that, there was, they had to have legislation passed specifically for that. So maybe you can let us know at some point whether that's.
I think that was going to be part of this, it was a legal review, whether.
See if there's legal considerations.
If I may, this is kind of also in line with the the locally owned, minority-owned and women-owned business that I think was supposed to be part of this list, but wasn't. Would it help if we just kind of folded all of that in? And Mr. Garcia and I are going to be meeting, I believe, next week for him to kind of go through the, or yeah, or this sometime this week, for us to kind of go through and then figure out how we're bringing back that report. Because I recognize the the state laws that that hinder us from doing that. But for example, when I look at processes in place in like City of Los Angeles and Pastina, it's it's not, it's not a mandate, it's a matter of like preference points that are given. If there's certification, and I think at the very least, I was looking for that. So maybe we can just incorporate all of that into one report versus having separate ones that, because the locals in mind as well.
I think it's something, Councilmember Satrian, I think it's something we've looked at in the past. So we could, council wants to incorporate that into the other discussion, we can do that.
Is everyone okay with just kind of combining all of that so we don't do two separate reports?
Sure. I think in as much as they'll require legal to give us some more information, I'm fine with combining them.
Okay, all right, we will fold, we will fold these two items together and list them on the work plan.
Thank you.
The la, the last item on this page is report on the possibility of Glendale. Yeah, we already talked about this, so.
Wait a second. This is, this is what we would like to get direction of consensus from council on. This is going to take considerable effort.
I would strongly support including this in the work plan. I think there there are opportunities now for us to do it different and to do it successfully.
This is the whole Sunrun deal that we.
No. Yes and no.
Well, yes and no.
Yes and no, I mean, to do it, take another shot at it, but a different, take a different approach, take a much simpler approach.
I would also support that. I think that, Mayor Brotman, that especially in light of some of the decisions that we've made, and I think we've made considerable progress. We still have certain gaps that we need to fill in terms of meeting our energy needs. And the virtual power plant should be revisited, at least have it continuously looked at until we can find someone that can provide us with what we are looking for.
The ink is still wet on our decision to dump the whole Sunrun and all that other stuff, you guys. And I think we discovered the industry, if I remember correctly, that the industry wasn't yet up to speed to serve us in the proper way. Shouldn't we give it a little more time and let them get up to speed?
I think they are. I mean, I think things, there's evidence of this happening all around us. So I don't think it, I never thought it was the industry wasn't up to speed. I frankly, I thought we weren't up to speed. So I think, I think we should re-look at this.
That's not fair. I think we were up to speed, but that.
Okay, difference of opinion.
It's the mayor, Mayor City Council, yeah, difference of opinion. Staff made every effort trying to make that process work, but it was ultimately Sunrun who pulled out. Nevertheless, this ask, the request is for a report. And I can ask GWP to put a report together on the feasibility of options, alternatives that are out there to Sunrun and then bring it to council for further direction.
But just to keep history straight, first it was Sunrun, then we went out for an RFP and we had a failure in the RFP process. So I have no objection to what you just said, to update us and see what the possibilities are.
What's available in the industry.
But we'll have to see. I mean, I I don't have my pulse on the finger on the pulse of the industry.
Well, Mayor, if I, I think we should continue to keep this on the work plan because this is one of our goals in sustainability. And, you know, it doesn't mean that this report has to come back next week or next month. I think whenever the, there's a change in technology that staff sees and thinks that there's a possibility that we could get a program like this, then we need to, we need to take that that chance. So I would agree with the mayor.
Okay.
I would hold that place.
Thank you.
Add that to the work list, moving along. Program similar to Sacramento's summer city hall internship program, July 2022, council members Satrian and Kasakian. And no, staff has not initiated any work on this item.
I'd like to keep this on.
Mayor.
Yes.
We we have interns, I mean, we hire them all the time, don't we? I mean, it seems like we see young people come in and out and, you know, I've recommended school kids.
Yeah, we do from time to time, but we don't have a a system in place. We don't have a policy in place.
I mean, when you say Sacramento, you mean city of Sacramento? You mean state?
So I had given, when I, when I introduced this, I had just come back from one of the conferences. I think it was the independent cities one. And there was a panel on youth involvement in city government. And I had given an example of Sacramento's, the City of Sacramento had this amazing city hall program for the summer that I wanted us to take a look at and see if we could implement something similar here in Glendale. It is something also I've talked to some of our local students about and attending both our schools and Glendale Community College. I think it would be worthwhile thing for us to kind of formalize some sort of program that allows our youth to spend city hall or summer at city hall. I mean, I know we used to do this when I was at ANC and they used to come and whatnot, but there's no.
Again, councilmember Satrian and Mayor and members of council, all of these items and ask worthwhile. Excellent point, but limited resources. We we need to really hone down on what's really important to this council.
Well, I find youth involvement important.
I agree, then something needs to come off of the list.
We, I could get three things off the list, we'll dig.
Mr. Galan. Yeah, I, well, I, you know, like you say, we have to go by, you know, importance, seriousness. We have student commissioners, we do have interns that come in. We had, we just had a city government program, I forget what it was called, where the community came in and learned about.
Yeah, Civic Services Institute.
And why, why couldn't we include students in that as well, 16 years old and older? That would be a great way to get them oriented into city government instead of putting another task on sta, on staff. So I would not be in favor of this.
How would that be putting more on staff if we're asking, if I'm asking for a report back for us to take a look at?
Well, then, councilmember Satrian, staff member will have to do the research, put the report together. As it was mentioned, and I I don't mean to be coy about it, but we don't have staff sitting around waiting for assignments. So that's, it's just a question of matching resources with the demands that they're getting. I mean, so far, again, I I.
I don't support it.
I have to emphasize that they've done a phenomenal job. They've tried to this date up until now to address your request and be respectful of your request. But it's reached a point that they can't handle additional, additional tasks and requests. As as simple as it may sound, it takes time and effort and energy that they have to take away from their other responsibilities and duties.
Okay.
Does that mean you're putting your request on hold?
Sure, I mean, if there's no support for it.
It's a good idea, but we're filled.
I mean, it's been there for a year. I know, but it's been there since last July. I have never bought it up, recognizing that it's going to take time. I would love for us to open up the city hall to youth. If my colleagues have an issue with that with a summer internship program that we could possibly look at, then I don't.
Councilmember Satrian, it's not that I have an issue with it. My issue is that I think that if we're going to do something, it should be, if it's worth doing, it's worth doing well and it's worth doing right. I think that, you know, we used to have a student city hall ambassador program that's been put on hold. I think that's a first step of bringing youth back into the process. It's not as heavy a lift. I would like to see that re-implemented and I mentioned that before. But in terms of internships, what I would counter to staff is that if done right, if done correctly and well, it'll actually alleviate some of the burden from staff by having a source of individuals who can come and assist with some of the smaller tasks. But I think that, you know, if we're dipping as far down into the high school level, I don't necessarily see the benefit of that. But I think that we should talk to Glendale Community College. I've had conversations with administration there about creating a pipeline of having individuals who are students at the college and also potentially doing either internships or even hourly jobs at the city to be able to help alleviate some of our. I'm sorry, was there, I didn't quite hear.
I said, this is painful, but I'm, I mean, I don't mean to offend.
I don't, I don't want, no, I mean, if if there's, that's why I said, if there's no agreement, we don't need to go on. So I'm happy to take it off, but I didn't want to cut you off.
No, no, I think in terms of, you know, if we're going to have internships, I would support something with the Glendale Community College, maybe have them do the heavy lift, identify classes where there could be individuals that could be referred to the city and help out in some of our departments where we need help.
And we can certainly, the departments, councilmember Kasakian, can communicate the positions of hourlies or interns. And we can certainly, the departments, councilmember Kusakian, can communicate the, the positions of hourlies or interns they need with the community college. We can coordinate with them. Um, but to, to generate a formal plan, it's going to take effort. That's, that's what I'm, we're not, we're not saying it's not a good idea, and, and you all have done a tremendous job of introducing city government to youth. We have more youth seats on our commissions, so that's a step forward.
I, I said we should take it off.
Thank you.
There's 14 more.
All right, so we have, um, the next set. Discussion on number of gun stores in the city and a potential for a CUP process.
And we've already, staff already started working on it.
Okay, next.
So let's keep, so.
Okay, so.
I would like to keep that.
We're going to keep that?
Yes, I would like to.
You've started working on it. We can talk about it.
Moving along, um, converting lot 15 to a mini park to cater to residents in the downtown area located on Orange between Wilson and California. Um, August 2022, and work has already initiated.
Yeah, we, we can leave that on, yeah. We, we'll bring a report back soon.
Recommendations to increase punitive damages on illegal construction and speed by which a case proceeds through the code enforcement process. I believe this came up earlier.
Yes, and this is one that I'm, I'm hoping that we can bring back. Staff can work on. I think we have to try to prevent, uh, illegal constructions. It's going, it's become like an epidemic. And, uh, I'd like to see a report on, on this item.
Let me ask a question. Uh, to what extent is there discretion in the city attorney's office to advance the time to proceed through code enforcement and perhaps filing your lawsuits and?
Uh, councilmember Jarian, I think it's, it's a two-pronged process, right? So it's either neighborhood services building doing their part, and then a case gets referred to us, or then a decision is made whether to go through administrative citation process or whether to refer to our office, and we have a process. So, I mean, it's probably, I think it would be useful at that point for CDD and our office to prepare something for you, if you want to, uh, consider the side for us to prepare and a report for you to, to explain to you how the process works and where, you know, if there are shortcuts or ways, processes that can be streamlined to, to move quicker. I think there's probably some philosophical questions that councilmembers may have with doing this, so I think you need to have that discussion as well before we, we move forward in any particular direction. But it's not just a matter of our office moving quicker. Um, you have to coordinate.
Right.
I, I, I support keeping this on. I think there's a lot of frustration about things that are done illegally and we don't necessarily have a process to really respond to. That's me.
Do we not do, do we not, do we not have a process in place?
We have a process.
We do, we do, and I, yeah, and I think what you're hearing from some of your colleagues is that they're frustrated, they're hearing frustration from constituents about, about the length that illegal construction goes before it's addressed. So question for you is, do you want to hear a report on that and possible some options on how to address it?
Well, if I may, don't we still have that house on, in Adams Hill that's 14 years in the process? Well, it's, you know, getting through the process, 14 years, getting through the process.
If, if I may recommend, um, I think part of our work plan includes the study that's going to include the code changes and processes, correct? So, um, I think we as a council decided that code enforcement, um, it, it was going to be more of a, uh, community-oriented approach and creating incentives and, um, looking at those changes versus how much we were investing in enforcement. I believe the number was 1.96 million dollars that we were investing in enforcement. So if part of that work plan document also includes, um, our enforcement processes, Mr. Calver, is that going to be included in that?
Uh, I, I believe as the city attorney highlighted, that's going to have to be a joint report. Would probably have to stand somewhat independent if we're talking about changing the speed at which something moves through in terms of an enforcement process, not an entitlement process. Those are kind of two distinct topics. One's being obviously more punitive, the other is us trying to be more efficient. Uh, so I, I think ideally those would be separated from each other.
Okay.
So is there, is there a third that wants to keep it on?
I, I'm, I'm not necessarily supportive of this because I think part of the issue, I'd like to know is, you know, what is compelling some of the legal construction? Obviously, uh, some of it is just people thumbing their nose at our rules and others of it has been, you know, people who have been frustrated, were waiting for a long time to do things that they feel that, you know, they should be able to do to their home. So, um, at this, at this point, given everything else, I, I, this is not the highest priority for me.
I'm going to park that.
You're going to park it?
Yeah, till we clear the deck from some other things.
Okay.
We'll let it continue.
Next.
Um, sign at Rock Haven with a QR code.
That's, that's already in the works.
That's already in the works. Um, seeking feedback on how the Sustainability Commission can offer a greater focus on wildfire mitigation in response to a recent report concluding that the effects of the 2020 wildfires surpassed decades' worth of emission reductions.
In a nutshell.
Throw that to the Sustainability Commission.
What is it exactly?
No, it's, remember when I said that all the work that we've done as a nation from 2010 to 2020 were dwarfed by five times the emissions that came from the wildfires in the last two years?
And so what could our Sustainability Commission do?
So hopefully it's to develop procedures with the fire department, I would presume, to prevent wildfires and reduce the impact and threat of wildfires which would be polluting our air. I don't care. Have you guys, you know?
I'd park it.
That was my clean air. That was my clean air.
Okay.
Contribution.
Okay.
Okay, just throw me under the bus. That's okay.
Welcome to the club.
Welcome to the club. Hey, you're metro, you're supposed to be under the bus.
That's fine, that's fine.
Okay, moving along, discussion on Glendale's infrastructure priorities, efforts to coordinate with other cities to identify common interests in response to the availability of trillions of dollars of, uh, federal infrastructure funds.
Uh, I think this is still valid. I think that this is something we ought to, you know, either have, um, our lobbyists look at or have, uh, as part of our continuous discussion, the money's out there and, um, we should be looking at ways to access it. So I don't know why we would take this off.
Yeah, our lobby should be all over this, identifying it, calling the particular departments and saying that there's a grant available. So I don't even think that's much work for staff until there's a possible payday at the end of it. So I would.
Even something that needs a report back to us, or is this just something that we tell our lobbyists they should be doing?
Yeah, I would support it.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. Last one on this page, discussion on status of existing legislation and options for what the city can do to assure the street, street vending is operated in a responsible manner, and staff has not initiated work on this item.
Yeah, I, I don't, I'm fine with having this parked to the side, um, until we hear more. I mean, occasionally we all get the complaints from restaurants, brick and mortar places, as well as residents who see certain, um, you know, vendors who are not, uh, being good, uh, you know, Samaritans or residents. I'm fine with taking it off. That's okay for now.
All right, last page, we're almost there. Naming of a square in honor of Home and Opera Chapter and in honor of, I hope I don't butcher this name, Sadeo Munamari. Thank you.
Didn't you already do that?
No.
Yeah.
No?
No, we, uh, we initiated conversations, uh, but because of the policy, the ordinance we have in place, uh, it didn't quite fit with the provisions, uh, in that policy, so, uh, there was a request to, to bring this item forward.
I, I would like to still bring at least a Sadeo. I know that with, um, the Home and Opera Chapter Square, part of it was that Armon Gorkorion, for whom it was for. It was not within the parameters of waiting at least five years.
Right.
Uh, before naming something, but I think with Sadeo Munamari, who's a Medal of Honor recipient, was, uh, you know, fought with the, in our US Armed Forces in World War II, I think it's more than appropriate to have um, an intersection named after him, and it's not something that would require any type of map changes. So, um, I would still like to have that, uh, report back to council.
Yeah, that, is that not, not too heavy a lift?
Yeah, not, not a heavy lift, yeah, we can do that. With, with that modification.
Okay.
Okay.
All right.
Cost benefit analysis of Rodrigo Wash Faveses, and I believe this is already part of the process, so we'll just. Host an electric bike test event. So I know GWP's already scheduled a vehicle one. This is to request a bike one.
Or adding bikes to the vehicle one, whichever is easier.
Okay.
Right. Again, not a heavy lift.
Moving along.
We'll keep that.
Yeah. Extension of building electrification to major remodels, including programs to help homeowners to do things like update to energy-efficient retrofits. This came up in your earlier discussion on the work plan.
Yeah, and just to be clear, these are two, actually, two different things. One is,
Correct.
Um, what is a major remodel?
Correct.
And extending the, the reach codes to major models. We talked about the legal issue. We'll clear that first. The other is, um, there, and this gets back to the, um, infrastruc- the, the, um, Inflation Reduction Act. There's a lot of money to help people that are trying to replace gas with electric equipment. So to the extent that we can help our residents take advantage of some of that and help with retrofits for existing buildings.
So, Mr. Mayor, for.
That would be, that would be incentives, not mandates.
Correct. And for clarification, Mr. Mayor, your request was, uh, and we've gone back and, and watched the tape, request was for a report to come back as to what constitutes major remodel so that this, uh, this requirement will take effect, correct?
Correct. We're not. Yeah, it's just a report to come back to discuss what our options are in terms of defining major remodel and extending building electrification to whatever we define as a major remodel, if we so choose.
Correct, yeah. This is not a direction.
Right, right.
I have, I, I need clarification on this. I may be remembering this incorrectly. When we talked about electrification before the vote, if I remember correctly, you wanted to include major remodels bef- right before we voted, and I asked, what does that mean? And you said, from the ground up, maybe just two, um, there's two walls. And I said, if it's that, then I'm for it, and I voted for that. And then you, and then there was a second, um, follow-up for major remodels that you brought forth.
Right.
Which I, during that meeting, at lea- I'm the one that seconded that motion.
Right.
With the understanding that we were just defining that major remodels were only from ground up or just like two walls up, but nothing beyond that. So can we clarify what it is that you're, you're looking for here?
What I'm looking for, okay, so we agreed that new construction is all electric. We didn't agree on anything for remodels. Only new construction is electric. That's the ordinance we passed. What I said is, I would like to move on as a phase two to extend that to include major remodels. Then the question is, what's a major remodel? We said, okay, let's bring back a report telling us what our options are, how we can define major remodel, and then we can decide whether we do or do not want to extend the reach codes to include major remodels, however we define that.
But I thought you defined that major remodel during that first vote. That's why I voted for you. At least said like, you know, on the ground up and.
We didn't have it to vote for.
Yeah, and Mr. Mayor.
It wasn't on the agenda to vote for.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, councilmember Satrian, it hasn't been codified, so, uh, our community development department and, and city attorney's office will have to bring those options, again, for council to give us direction because we can't just say two walls. So it has to go into more details of what constitutes a major remodel. So that if we get direction, it's codified. Right now, it's not.
So right now, it's only for new, new buildings?
Correct.
Maybe.
Maybe.
Pending, pending interpretation of whatever the court rule.
Okay. So can we keep that?
Well, that's got to come after we get the legal interpretation.
Sure, sure. But that should be relatively clear.
We're working on that right now. But you're, right now, the, the request is just a, uh, an item on what it would be a major remodel so the council can decide whether to direct staff to move forward on, on looking at that. So it's not really the options on what the regulations would look like. It's just telling you what a major remodel is.
Yep.
What it might be, and you would provide us direction, uh, on, on whether you want it to.
If we're going to use that definition.
Yeah.
For the direction I would hope we get out of this discussion would be, staff, here's what we agree is a major remodel. Can you please prepare an ordinance to cover that? Is that?
Yes, yes. That, that'll be the next step after we bring the report.
And it could be that we all say, staff, don't prepare an ordinance, or we could say, staff, please prepare an ordinance for this definition of major model, not that definition of major. So that's what we get to do. All right. Good, makes sense.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, moving along. Policy discussion to exceed solar installation in excess of the current 110% maximum.
That's the, Mr. Mayor, my city council, that's a conversation that we have started having. Uh, we've met with a couple of, uh, solar, uh, private solar installation companies, and I, I believe Mr. Young and staff are, are working on, amending that, uh, that maximum.
Yeah.
Well, that's, that's different.
Yeah. Is everybody clear on what that is, though? Okay, keeping it?
Next.
Already started on it.
Last three items, report on disaster preparedness and tools we have available such as CERT.
Um, that was just, we have CERT, and all I was, all I was thinking is how could we just do a better job getting CERT out to the community? But I think we can leave that with the emergency manager. I think they're working on that.
Okay. All right. Consideration of limit on what landlords can charge as an application fee for potential tenants.
Yeah, that came out of, I think, one situation. Um, so I, I'm okay parking that.
Okay. And actually, that was the last one. Okay. Um, so if, um, I, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, so eight, um, nine items were removed out of the 21, and we combined councilmember Asatrian's request on the, um, purchasing with the other legal item, so. So all of these that we decided to keep will be wrapped into the work plan.
Mr. Mayor, member city council, thank you so very much. I know that was quote-unquote painful. Appreciate collapsing this follow-up list, and, uh, we will not have two lists any longer moving forward. Uh, we'll go through the motion to adopt the, the work plan, but, uh, as for the future, uh, and there will be, um, occasions that council members would like to add items, uh, to the work plan. I would just remind you, uh, that we have a new process in place. Not only that, uh, I think to councilmember Devine's point, if a request comes up, uh, I, I would use, uh, these five criteria as to, is it an emergency? Is it, does it constitute a community safety issue? Are there changes in laws or mandates? Or is there an outside funding with a deadline time-sensitive that we need to jump on? Or if it's a, you know, a new, brand-new multi-agency opportunity, for example, the housing, regional housing, JPA, that obviously can, cannot be delayed. So the, and then whether this request fall into the four priority areas that hopefully you are going to adopt, uh, in a minute. And then, uh, uh, the May 2nd, um, council meeting, there were two items on the new business that we discussed, and there was conversation about when requests come up, do we ask, uh, staff to provide a memo as opposed to a full-on report? And then after council reads the memo, like is the case that we're going to meet on, uh, later this week, after you read the memo, then if you believe it merits a, a full staff report, then. After you read the memo, then if you believe it merits a full staff report, then you can direct us to do so. Otherwise, you may be satisfied with the contents of the memo that addressed your request.
Okay.
So I really like the memo versus the report. I think oftentimes, you know, I kind of think about how we're spending our time at City Hall and what we're spending our council meetings discussing, so. I think, you know, it would, if I understand correctly, it would be up to the person that initiated that to say, you know what, I looked at the report. Or the memo, and I would like for it to come to council, but at that time, it wouldn't need to be discussed to come again, correct? Okay. And I think the one thing that I would want to reference for your five areas is, you know, really thinking about the priority areas. Because there might be ideas or opportunities for partnerships that may come up, and so I would want to make sure that. That it's not just emergency or like some funding opportunity, but it could also be that there's a partnership opportunity or. Things happen on a daily basis in the city that cause for us to think about new ordinances. But I would hope that we would stick to the priority areas we chose to.
Okay, so we have somebody waiting to speak, Victoria Valentine, I understand.
Yes, we have Victoria Valentine on the phone. Victoria, you're on line, you have three minutes to speak, go ahead.
Hello?
Hello.
Yes, go ahead.
Well, your disclosure is amazing, confirming city council taking no action. Question, what is city council's scope of practice, I think it's the rubber stamp. I asked that the staff check with medical authorities about the effect of lack of sleep. How harmful is it, how injurious? Monday comes, lack of sleep, Tuesday, lack of sleep, the light is shining through the window. Wednesday, same thing, Thursday, Friday, how long can a person go on like that? Would it be possible to refer this matter now, not next year? Or send it to the keep column, to the building and safety column compliance, or police patrol, what are they patrolling? Even any light from any source in your bedroom is harmful disturbance of the sleep. Sleep in dark room only, please do something, thank you.
Thank you.
This one true or not?
Okay, is that it? Okay, so now I will. Ask for a motion to adopt the work plan.
I'll move it.
We have a motion from council member.
Doing a summary, you're comfortable with the changes that were made?
Well, we're gonna.
As you do the summary, I'm fine with that. We'll work with Ms. Boboyan to.
Yeah, give us a clean sheet.
Yeah, we'll definitely do that.
I'll second.
So a motion to approve the work plan in accordance with the changes made by council members.
I'll second.
Well, I already had a second from council member Najarian, so roll call, please.
Council members Asatrian.
Yes.
Devine, Kazakian.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Mayor Botman.
Yes. So what is next?
Ola.
Next is oral communications, discussion is limited to items, not a part of this agenda, each speaker is allowed five minutes. Council may question or respond to the speaker, but there will be no debate or decision. The city manager may refer the matter to the appropriate department for investigation and report. We have two callers and four cards.
Okay. Okay. Ramella Aragi, that's our first speaker. She left? Okay, I'll have she come here. Marina Vivor? Vivar? Vivar, Marina Vivar, welcome, you have five minutes.
Good evening, council members. The reason why I'm here is pretty straightforward, I suppose. So the first is a violation of consent of a parental, or I have to give her permission to participate in sex ed. Which I did give her permission to participate in sex ed to a certain degree, and then you can mark off boxes that you don't wish your child to participate in. I specifically wrote out anything that was LGBTQ plus and anything that would involve. Sexual acts that are gay or sexual acts that are lesbian in nature. This, however, wasn't respected by Glendale High School, and my daughter was taught subjects such as scissoring. Which seems to be two females who decide to have sex with each other. And the good thing is they at least taught you to use female condoms, because if you don't use female condoms, then two females can get pregnant. Which is not really normal, or not really normal, but not really something that can actually happen. When my daughter expressed that she should not be in these classes, and that I did opt her out of these classes. She was called a bigot by her teacher and her aide, she was called intolerant, and she was also called homophobic. These are all terms that she actually didn't know until yesterday, they're not part of our vocabulary at home. And it was definitely not a setting that I wanted her to learn these terms in, and especially being called out on it just because she simply expressed that. Due to her Christian beliefs, this goes against her morals and this goes against her beliefs, and it was just as simple as that. At that point, a staff member told her to look at her skin color and to, if she wanted, if she felt that. I'm so sorry, if she felt that she should be discriminated against due to her skin color. And she said, no, she shouldn't feel discriminated against or be discriminated against due to her skin colors. He said, well, discriminating against transgender sex is the same thing, which it is not. If we tell children that characteristics, you know, eth- ethical characteristics or cultural characteristics. And being judged on those are the same or equal to LGBTQ sex, it's incorrect, it's not right. It's also not right that I emailed the teacher, I emailed Ben Wolfe, who is the principal, I emailed Mr. Olvera, who is the assistant principal. On these matters, and I asked them to please let me know why, first of all, like my, I was already upset at the fact that she was even in these classes. But more so, I was upset about her being called out on her skin color. And her being called these terms that obviously we see on TV every single day, and a child should not be exposed to that type of language. I don't feel that a teacher or a staff member's personal opinion or beliefs or lack of. Should be considered on the clock, that's not what you guys are paying them for. That we were not paying teachers for their opinions or to share their opinions or to push their opinions or agendas on children. And this unfortunately was what my daughter went through. Mr. Ben Wolfe's investigation concluded within three hours. And it was just basically, it didn't happen. Then how did my daughter come home, explain to me what scissoring was, and asking me how two females can have sex? And must use protection, two biological females must use protection or else they can get pregnant? How else would my daughter come home knowing the word transphobic? And how else would my daughter come home knowing the word bigot or intolerant? That's what I would like to know, not too long ago, you, the mayor, was at her school, at Glendale High School, at an event in the evening. She was very thrilled to meet you or to see you at least show up at her school. And being that you have such a personal, hopefully tied with the school, I would hope that at least some of this, or at least some common sense can be instilled in the staff. To not treat children like this. I would also like to mention, she is in a special day class. She does have a frontal lobe brain injury that doesn't even allow her to process this, and it is not the first incident.
Okay, thank you.
What school are we talking about?
Glendale High School.
Glendale High School.
And also, and I know I passed my time. The principal, Ben Wolfe, decided to turn my emails, somehow in a strategic manner, he turned my emails. And rephrased everything I said as I was attacking Mrs. Kellogg, which is her teacher.
Okay. I appreciate the comments and knowing about this, as you know, we have no jurisdiction over Glendale Unified School District. I would suggest you raise this with the administration, if you don't feel like the principal is hearing you out, you can raise it with the administration. The superintendent or an assistant superintendent, that's what I would suggest you do. Okay?
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Okay, next speaker is Thelma Gonzalez. Oh, that's you?
Yeah. Good evening, no.
Okay.
Good afternoon. I would like to. Explain of my teachers, with my teachers were going to spend, send me to the principal's office when I told them that I was against my beliefs and that. I felt uncomfortable. There is a female, but I'm not exactly sure, I'm not, it isn't my religion to know what are people and what are. Like what they identify or do not identify. I got in trouble one time, many times, many times. Of my English teacher, Mr. Moore. I got in trouble because I called this girl, Kenny, a girl. I got in trouble for it because I wasn't exactly sure, I never knew what it was. My teacher said, I used the wrong pronouns, that's not what they identify as. I said, I'm not exactly sure if they have breasts and ovaries in their vagina. And I wasn't exactly sure, I'm sure they have short hair and that's what they identify as, and their pronouns. I got in trouble for it many times, either through adult or student. I got in trouble one time for calling this girl Kenny, a girl. I said, well, she, Kenny and I, I used the word she when I was using my assignments, because we're working together. I was also in the girls locker room, I don't like to dress that at all, and that's not okay. Well, I got in trouble for it because. I did not dress out in front of other people, I didn't dress out for many reasons. One, there's male teachers inside of the girls locker room, talking to my, Ms. Lewis. They go to the same, there's the girls locker room and then there's Ms. Lewis's office. Ms. Lewis has her door open, and then there's male teachers inside of her office. I never wanted to see that. That's why I don't dress out to P E. I, I was scared, I was terrified, and then. Cause I was afraid of somebody staring at me, a male, an adult male, staring at me while I'm changing. That's why I don't change, and then. It was another issue. I am in the special day classes and I have a one on one aide. My one on one aide was Cameron, but they called him Cam. I asked, I guess I was mistaken or corrected by calling Cameron Miss Cam. My parents had always taught me that adults, a male is Mister and their last name, or their first name. Female is Miss or Missy, if they're married, and of their first name or their last name. With Cameron, I called him, yeah, I called him Miss Cameron because I saw the breath. I'm not saying that I can see what their preference is, because that'd be kind of weird, I saw breath. I called him Miss Cameron. Many times, more than one time, I have been. Ignored by my own teachers because I called them by the wrong pronouns. I've always been ignored by calling Cameron a Miss instead of a Mister. I wasn't exactly sure what that was, because I wasn't raised like that, so I called Cameron Miss Kim. They didn't like to call them Cameron, but it was Miss Kim. My parents taught me if they're confused, just call them by their first name, I always thought that that was disrespectful. I called him Cameron.
Hey, I'm sorry, your five minutes is up.
I'm sorry, I'm not.
Thank you for sharing.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, thanks. Okay. Our next speaker is Alan Dish.
Good evening, council, I'm gonna deliver this next week, if that's okay, so I'm gonna let go of my time.
We're not here next week. So you're gonna have to wait two weeks.
I'll do it.
Okay, all right, thank you. And we have four callers? Three callers?
Our first caller is Rob, Rob, you're on the air and you have five minutes, go ahead.
Good evening. Mr. Botman has multiple times identified his activism and environmentalism as a reason that he joined politics within the city of Glendale. With the main goal of passing laws and regulations so that Glendale does its own part to solve global warming. In many ways, Mr. Botman is a failure as an environmentalist. He has failed to convince people through the peaceful and voluntary exchange of ideas and discussions that changing their way of life or environmentalism will benefit them. So he has joined as a politician and government bureaucrat to force people through coercion by laws and regulations. To change their lifestyles so that he can quench his environmentalist and activist thirst. However, rather than being an environmentalist, which is a noble pursuit, Mr. Botman is an alarmist. A person that abuses environmentalism to achieve political goals. The goal of an alarmist is to instill fear and anxiety to a population. Then identify himself as a godlike figure that will deliver them from his fear and anxiety. And all you need to do is to surrender to Mr. Botman your money, freedom, and life. The last three years have been an excellent example of type of fear and anxiety that has been spread. This is why you still see individuals alone in their car with the windows up, wearing a cloth mask. Or a person running on Mountain Street on a Saturday morning without a soul around them, but with the mask on. Or even just outside, walking, wearing a mask, thinking that they're actually preventing in the spread of COVID or acquiring COVID. This is a disturbing behavior based on fear and anxiety, and Mr. Botman is an example of a person that has helped to instill this fear and anxiety. One characteristic of an alarmist is that they do not accept different point of views, arguments, or conjectures. This is why Mr. Botman name calls people as climate deniers. I have no idea what a climate denier is, but Mr. Botman utilizes this term without even knowing what the perspective of the other person is. In many ways, this is an immature and intellectually empty way to try to demonize and silence people that do not agree with them. Am I a climate denier if I disagree with the assumptions, methodology, and conclusions of the IPCC report for valid reasons? Or am I a denier if I agree with the IPCC report but disagree with the methodology of the solution? That is giving ever more power to bureaucrats and politicians. of the solution that is giving even more power to bureaucrats and politicians like Mr. Botman to determine every aspect of our lives? I think Mr. Botman might be shocked to know that some people do not think he has enough information, knowledge, or foresight to optimally organize people's lives. A small example of an alarmist behavior is Mr. Botman's attempt to outlaw gas lift blowers. Now, I really, now, I really hate gas lift blowers, but I, but the difference is, I just don't hire anyone. I uses it, while Mr. Botman wants to ban the tool that some people make their living with. Mr. Botman, a person who had no qualms working in China to make a handsome living, with China just last year permitting about two new coal power plants per week, yet it is the person using a gas-powered lift blower to feed his family that's the problem. Mr. Botman, who lives in a 2,000-square-foot house on almost an 8,000-square-feet of land, worth about $1.5 million, has a larger environmental footprint than good majority of people in Glendale, yet it is the person using the gas-powered lift blower that is the problem. With all due respect, Mr. Botman, you are an alarmist masquerading as an environmentalist to acquire even more power to fulfill your own ego. Thank you.
Excuse me, thank you. The next caller?
Our next caller is Steve Dunwitty. Steve, you're on air, you have five minutes.
Good evening, mayor and members of the city council and city clerk and staff. Thank you for your work for into tonight on behalf of the citizens of Glendale. My name's Steve Dunwitty, I'm a veteran and college educator and environmental advocate. And, you know, I had the opportunity a couple months ago to actually address the council in discussing the Inflation Reduction Act and the opportunities to deal with the climate emergency that we are in, as confirmed by scientists, and advance clean energy goals. So really thrilled to see the city council taking that seriously and continue to do that work and hope that you will continue to take advantage of the grant and loan opportunities there so that you can have the resources to make these necessary changes for our future. And, but if I might transition just for a moment, you know, we are also dealing with an unprecedented number of attacks on communities of color, the Armenian community, the Jewish community, and the LGBT community, of which I'm also a part of. And I would urge the council to use all of the resources available to be able to educate people, which clearly we're in need of, in education in terms of terminology, how to respect people by calling them as they wish to be called, and not to disparage others for that lack of understanding. And when we're looking across the country and also seeing so much happening with mass shootings and other kinds of things too, you know, we, you know, are in need of ensuring that, you know, our public safety as well as first responders and, yes, even librarians have the resources necessary to be able to deal with these kinds of things and to keep our community safe so we can go to work and school and other places. And I would say that until we have leaders in Congress who are willing to put everything on the line, like we saw in Tennessee with our state, with those per state legislators or with the transgender legislator in Montana, it's really going to be up to state and local governments like Glendale to lead the way in that. And I hope to be able to be a partner in doing that as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our final caller is Victoria Valentine. Victoria, you're on air, you have five minutes.
Hello?
Hi.
Hello?
Go ahead, we can hear you.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hello?
We can hear you.
Hello?
Yes?
I don't know.
Hello, can you hear us?
I don't think I'm on.
You're on.
But we hear you.
What I need to ask is the attorney question. You do want me to come in into the chambers then?
What was that?
Go ahead. Go ahead. You might want to call back.
Hello?
Okay, I'm gonna. Sorry. I know what the issue is.
Want to give a second to see if she calls back? No, she doesn't look like anybody's calling. Can you see it? Well, Ms. Valentine, if you are watching us, we couldn't hear you. I'm sorry, you couldn't hear us, but we could hear you. But if you have a question for the city attorney, you can email the city attorney, and I'm sure he will respond to your question. And you can email the rest of us as well so that we know what the question is. With that, if there are no more callers, the next item is to adjourn, is that right?
I'll move to adjourn.
We are adjourned at 10:16 PM.